So it is 6:31 and I'd like to call the Select Board meeting to order.
Do you want to wait for Lauren?
No.
Well, you need to, just take notes.
You're fine.
Nope, we need Lauren here.
Do I hear a motion to accept the agenda?
Moves.
Moved by Ms. Canfield, second.
Second.
Second by Ms. Curran. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Uh, walk-ins. Are there any walk-ins tonight? Nope. All right. So now on to the report of the town administrator, Mr. Boudreaux.
Thank you, good evening. Uh, let's start with the tropical storm that wasn't, Henri. We were, I think, lucky that it missed us. The original forecast was going to put the gun barrel right to our head and it ended up going west, which was good for us. Uh, we did prepare for the more robust storm. We staffed up our public safety, we staffed up our GPW. Um, I think the big discussion on Friday was whether or not to put the storm gates in at the beaches. Uh, we decided not to, would have taken too long. And then today they'd still be in and people would be screaming that they couldn't get to the beach, so we decided not to do that. Uh, but it was, uh, it was a good exercise for us to gear up and mobilize, um, and kind of exercise what we haven't done for a while. Uh, one of the holes we found, I think, in our, uh, response to a storm like this, the summertime is not generally a time when we get a storm like this. And we had some discussions on Friday about what do we do about all the people who are visiting Situate, because our population almost doubles in the summertime, who don't subscribe to our email blast, who don't go on our website, who don't register our reverse 911? How do we get those people? Uh, and I think that's a discussion we're going to have to have. We put sign boards out this time. I don't think that's a great way to do it, but I think we're going to have to find some other way when things happen in the summertime, uh, that we can reach out to those people. I think in the wintertime and the regular weather, when the regular residents are here, they know what to do, they know when to get in, they know when to get out. Uh, but with the summer residents, you know, we see it all the time. Oh, look, a coastal storm, let's go look. So, I think that's something we're going to have to kind of batter around as an emergency management team as to how we can reach people in the summertime when we know we have a population that is not here all the time and is really not cognizant of some of the severity of the storms that we have and some of the issues that they may have with their staying, so. Uh, but aside from that, I think it was a good exercise for us to gear up. We opened the ELC briefly, just to have a quick meeting there, make sure everything was running, make sure all our cameras were running. So, uh, but we missed it and that's good and I think we're better prepared for the next one and hopefully we don't have to deal with it, uh, for quite a while. Uh, for water main construction, the project on utility, they connected utility into First Parish today. So that is now a looped neighborhood. The residents are already enjoying the new water mains with the connection to Country Way, but now it's looped, so the residents up there should see much better water quality and much better water pressure. Uh, now we'll let that sit for a little while and then we'll come in and we'll pave those roads and fix all the, uh, all the holes and the divots and everything that we dug up. But that should be a real improvement to the water quality in that neighborhood up behind the town hall. Uh, Old Oak and Bucket, um, they were almost all the way down to 123 today. They were supposed to finish up that water main today, if not today, tomorrow. Once that's done, they'll start doing the services and getting that hooked up. And when that's all done, we'll be paving large portions of Old Oak and Bucket. But that will remain closed at this point, open only to local traffic as we work on that. The water demand for last week was 1.449 million gallons per day, was down again. Uh, the rainy weather is definitely helping us. We haven't seen numbers this low for this long and a long time. Uh, the reservoirs still plus 1.5 inches, tack factory is plus four and a half inches. So to have water flowing over in August is, is unprecedented for us. Uh, as an aside, when Kevin and I went out on Sunday, we did see people playing golf on Sunday afternoon, right in the middle of Henri. Um, so you could hit drives about 400 yards in one direction and maybe 10 in the other if you got the wrong wind. But, good for the water. The water treatment plant pilot study is ongoing, you can see the, the modules down there. We're in week three of a seven-week study. Then they'll go away and they'll come back in the cold weather and test the cold weather. And again, the point of that is to make sure that we are designing a water treatment plant specifically for the type of water that we have in our reservoir. So, they will pilot that for seven weeks and then come back in the wintertime. Uh, on the COVID, we had 24 new cases as of yesterday for the week, down two from the 26 of the previous week. Uh, however, our positivity rating jumped significantly and that's because, as we talked about before, we go Monday to Monday, the state goes Thursday to Thursday, and they lag a little bit behind us. So our positivity rating is now up to 2.93%. A little higher than the state, the state's at 2.65, but about three-quarters of a point less than the county percentage, which is about 3.68. So, those numbers are still up. Uh, we keep talking about the Delta variant is here, it is more contagious than chickenpox. Uh, if you've not been vaccinated, please check with your physician, determine if it's right for you. 99% of the people who have been hospitalized recently and 97% of the people who have passed away recently from COVID are unvaccinated. So, uh, it either will keep you from getting the vaccine, uh, from the virus, I'm sorry, and if you get it, it will make sure that it's a mild case and you'll be able to avoid hospitalization and serious complications. Uh, if you go up First Parish Road, you'll see the work is continuing on First Parish. From Country Way up past the senior center, they're working on putting in a brand-new sidewalk on the same side as the senior center, that's all dug up. And then we'll be putting a new sidewalk in on the opposite side from Central Park, up in front of the church, and that will connect across the street to the senior center on the new campus. That'll prevent people from having to cross Beaver Dam, First Parish, and then Cudworth to get from Central Park. That was a key component, I think, of connecting, um, the campus to the library and the senior housing on the other side. Uh, that is ongoing. When that is done, then the contractor will come back and put the final pavement coat on First Parish. Uh, Jefferson, Washington Ave, Lane, Clifton Ave, and Thomas Ave have all received a binder and leveling course. Uh, they're being paved. Now the contractor will come in and will raise the basins and the castings and then we'll get the final course down there, so those neighborhoods will all be done. Uh, I've said this several times, uh, we've already spoken to the police department, Chief Thompson. Uh, the first complaint we get is about how bad the roads are. And when we finish, the last complaint we get is about speeding. So, we will already be having the police out there, running radar and slowing people down, not taking advantage of that new pavement. Uh, the Steadman Rink renovations, uh, have commenced. You can see there's a lot of work going on over there. The concrete work has been done, the asphalt will be put in tomorrow, that is the base for the actual rink itself. And once the asphalt is poured, it has to sit for 14 to 21 days so that all the oils and stuff can come out of the asphalt before they can put down the finished surface. So once the asphalt's not in curing, they'll bring in the dashes and the boards and get those set up and get ready for the final paving. Uh, the work is still scheduled to be done by the end of September. We have met with the school department to make sure that we will not interfere with school once they're back in. There'll be no deliveries during pickup and drop-off. Uh, we've cleared out most of the parking that the schools need. We'll be maintaining a couple parking spaces over there. Uh, but we've cleared that with them and we're ready to go. So that is ongoing and that'll be nice when we get it done. Uh, the last thing over there really would be the tennis courts. And I understand there's a CPC application for fixing up the tennis courts. Uh, well 17 Green Ace is progressing, the permanent power is there. The only thing we're waiting for right now is the installation of a meter by National Grid. Uh, we'll get on that from them. Once that's in, we'll begin the testing phase of that plant and make sure everything's working the way it is. And we're hoping to have the DEP in for inspection in September. Once that is back online, that's between 200 and 250,000 gallons of water back into the system with no iron, no manganese, that'll all be cleared out by the new green sand filter. So we're excited about that. Down at Widow's Walk, you can see the shape of the outline of the building. Uh, what is there is what is going to be put up. A little projection in the front will be the new entryway and there'll be handicap entryways in there. Uh, the parking lot has got its binder coat, you'll see that. If you go down there now on the back of the 18th Green, you'll see a very large concrete basin. That is going to be the sedimentation basin, uh, as I've told the board before. Well 18B has a green sand filter over by the, um, the solar panels and the transfer station. When that green sand filter gets flushed, that wastewater will be pumped over to that sedimentation basin to let the iron and manganese settle out, then that water will go into the pond and be used for watering the golf course. So we won't be wasting any of that water, we'll be able to use it again. Uh, that project, the piping is in, the basin is in, and we're just, I think, finalizing some of the last piping to get that up and running. And that will allow us to run well 18B also, which is in excess of 100 and change a day of good clean water that we'll be able to put back into the system. The golf course renovations are expected to be done this fall. Once it's finished, we will then have a bid for the new operator, the golf course concession, and have that hopefully all up and running for the start of the golf season next year. Uh, you go down to Hamerock, you'll see the fire station, the fire station living quarters, the frame is up, the sides are up, the roof trusses are up. The, uh, base for the new bay is up and we expect the walls for the bay to come in this Friday and start to be constructed. That will be done, has to be done by the fall before the cold weather gets here. But right now, we are still on schedule to finish that in time to get the people in there before the cold weather and the trucks have to come out of the tent. Uh, two more things real quick, uh, for people who use our beaches. Uh, the lifeguards are now starting to go back to school. We start losing lifeguards every day, every week. Uh, Egypt Beach, the lifeguards have already ended on Egypt Beach, that ended on August 17th. Uh, Minnetonka, the gods' last day will be August 25th. The last day for Peggotty will be August 29th. And the last day for Hamerock will be Labor Day, September 6th. So, every week we lose a few more guards back to school. So the last one will be Hamerock on August 6th. Uh, and finally, the board is aware of the plan by the federal government to potentially close the Situate Coast Guard Station. Uh, we are preparing our remarks. We have still not gotten a response from the Coast Guard to the questions that we sent them over two weeks ago, two and a half weeks ago. Uh, we're working with our legislative delegation to try to speed that up. Uh, in the meantime, we will be holding a press conference, uh, down at the Hobbit Masters Shack next Tuesday at 10:30. It was originally scheduled for tomorrow. Uh, Congressman Lynch was going to be our headliner, but they have kept him in session tomorrow, so he will be in session tomorrow. Uh, so now we have it scheduled for next Tuesday. Uh, Congressman Lynch is expected to be there. Uh, we do expect and hope that Congressman Keating will be there and representatives from Senator Markey and Senator, uh, Warren will be there, plus our legislative delegation and representatives from all the communities from Hull all the way down to Plymouth that are affected by this closing. So, if the board is available, it's 10 o'clock next, uh, next Tuesday. And that's what I have for the season.
Thank you, Jim. Questions from the board? Ms. Canfield?
Just a quick question. Um, I haven't been able to look at the beaches. Do we have erosion or, um, or not, or, or, um?
Uh, I haven't been down to look at it. I, I saw some reports online of erosion down at Minnetonka. Um, I was out at the lighthouse today, um, and a lot of seaweed. Seems like I brought a lot of seaweed back in, but I haven't received reports of significant erosion except for some reports I saw online for Minnetonka.
They're reminding folks that we can't remove that seaweed and throw it to public that issue?
We are not allowed to remove the seaweed, that's correct. And generally what the ocean giveth, eventually they'll take it back.
Right, so, and folks ought to call, bear that in mind. Uh, and the only other question I had is, um, if, uh, so we will, except for Hamerock, it sounds like we will not have lifeguards Labor Day weekend?
Correct.
Are there notices that are put up that people are aware? I mean, I guess it's obvious they're not there, but do we do that?
Usually do.
Um, there are signs, we take the signs down, Kev? I believe, is Kevin gone? I think we take the signs down that we put up.
Signs, go ahead.
Okay, that's fine, I just.
And it's been put out, they've posted it, they've sent it out through email blast. We'll send it out and let people know.
Hopefully we'll have it each day, that Labor Day weekend. That's all, Jim?
I haven't had a minute to say.
Well, I have to say, um, I'm very grateful. I was at that last meeting on, uh, Friday at the Emergency Operations Center and we're very lucky as a town to have such a good team of people to, um, help us through whatever comes our way. We're happy Henri did not come our way, but, um, everybody was ready to go and I just want everyone in Situate to know that, um, we're lucky to have the people we have. Um, my suggestion is, can, can landlords or whoever, uh, that people usually leave instructions for renters with various numbers, like the plumber's number, that, uh, do we have a way of letting people get an emergency alert from the town on a temporary basis?
Sure, anybody who wants to get an emergency alert through the reverse 911 just has to go online and sign up.
So I.
There's a link on our website and they can go right on and put in either their home number or their cell phone number or both, uh, and they'll be part of our emergency alert system.
So I think maybe that's the answer to that, if people actually put it on their instructions. They tell you how to use the dishwasher, maybe they should tell you how to stay in touch with the town in the, in the event of an, an emergency. Um, that's it for me, so shall we move on? The next item on our agenda is the acceptance of a donation from Situate Youth Lacrosse. Is Mr. DeCorsey here?
No, Mr. O'Brien's here.
Mr. Ryan, thank you.
Mr. O'Brien.
O'Brien.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you for the donation.
I'm hoping this will be the easiest part of your night ever. Um, everybody just say yes and we'll all go well. Um, my name is Sean O'Brien, I live at Seven Penning Crest Road in Situate. I'm also the president of Situate Youth Lacrosse. Uh, and I want to start by saying a big thank you to everyone who was involved in the planning, the funding, and the building of the, the turf complex here, um, and the Situate High School restoration, field restoration project. Um, you know, I think we've produced an incredible place for the townspeople to recreate and it's been my pleasure to be one of the first official users this spring of the complex. And I can't tell you how many comments I've gotten from parents and athletes and people just walking the path about how pleased they are about the, the new facility and how well it came out. And just to be able to see, you know, groups of kids coming down and enjoying the field with either their friends or with their families, uh, it really has been a treasure and hopefully, uh, we'll do a good job of keeping, keeping it up to date and making sure, um, making sure it's a good, uh, legacy for a bunch of years to come. So, thank you to the team that put that together. The Select Board, the TA, Situate Recreation, the CPC, the different youth sports organizations and the, the community that packed it. Um, I also want to thank our current and past families of Situate Youth Lacrosse and our board of directors for making it possible for us to, to make a fairly significant, um, financial commitment to the, to the complex. Some of you may not know, but we put $40,000 of private funding into the lacrosse wall that's just adjacent to the, to the softball field and we feel that'll make a big difference in our athletes being able to, uh, to practice their individual stick skills and, you know, can be used for tennis and soccer as well, so it's not a lacrosse-specific, um, activity, but as a good additive, I think, in addition to the, uh, to the overall complex itself. And then, um, you know, also to make this $10,000 donation to the, to the town. So, you know, we're extremely proud to be one of the limited number of town sports organizations who have committed a sizable donation to the project. And as such, I'm here to fulfill our commitment to the people of Situate by donating the $10,000 to the town with the request that the funds be used for future maintenance and improvement of the, of the facility. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. We really like hearing about funds for maintenance. So we thank your organization in particular, and I do know that it was very important to the town and, and in the CPC application in particular, that some of the youth organizations stepped up because they benefit as well. So, we really appreciate everything that you have done in your organization and thank you. Any?
You've covered it.
No, thank you, I just have a question for Jim. And Nancy, you know, since they specifically want this for maintenance, um, where's it going to reside? Do we make sure that it's tracked properly and used according to their wishes?
It's a check, so Nancy gets it.
So Nancy gets the question?
It's a select board athletic gift account.
Okay.
So only, um, the town administration can access it.
Can, okay, perfect.
It can only be spent for the purpose for which the donation was made.
Perfect. Great, thank you to you and all of your parents, um, who've donated. So it's a great, it's a great club organization and we really appreciate your partnership.
Good, happy to be part of the community, thank you very much.
Thank you.
You have to vote.
Oh.
Would you like to vote? Yes, please. Um, we're always happy to take a vote. Moved at the Select Board accepted donation of $10,000 to the town of Situate for athletic field future improvements and maintenance on behalf of the Situate Youth Lacrosse. Second. Second by Ms. Curran, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries 4-0, thank you. No, thank you.
Thanks again.
So next on our agenda is the, um, discuss vote Situate High, High School banners. Scott Payne, Athletic Director, Situate High School?
Good evening.
Well, Mr. Payne, how long have you been with us?
Excuse me?
How long have you been with us?
It's a while, I know.
I thought you were new.
Unofficially, prior to that, as I made the trip with the lacrosse team to Long Meadow. It was the 13-hour trip, which I actually started on the way home on the bus. That was my official first day.
Oh, no.
We haze our director?
I'm sorry, 13 hours in Long Meadow?
So, uh, it was a semifinal game. It's a three-hour, two, two hour and a half, uh, bus trip. We had some traffic, we got there. The second we were supposed to start the game, we had a lightning delay, uh, which lasted almost four hours.
Ugh.
So we left here at 2:00. I walked into my house, so by the lighthouse at 3:50 AM.
And you still came to Situate as the Athletic Directors, that's great.
Thank you very much for your perseverance.
The, the kids were fantastic, it was great. I mean, it didn't make sense to, to come back and have to turn around and drive back the next day, just the expense of all.
Right, yeah.
So I was in contact with, uh, Dr. McGuire, Mr. Burke, and to make sure that they were okay, that we stayed and waited. We got the game in, unfortunately didn't go our way. The kid, the kids were fantastic. It's tough to keep them contained for that amount of time and they were all geared up to play lacrosse game, but many of the, um, Long Meadow administration commented about how well our kids will behave, because they were inside the school. So, I mean, you know, Long Meadow's a very, very large building, um, so they had kind of like free rein. They were well behaved, so it was.
That's nice.
It was a great experience for me to see that the, these are the type of kids that I get to work with.
Well, that's great. So you're here to talk to us tonight about, um, what is going to be, at least for the time, being a temporary, uh, program? And so maybe you can explain to the board what you're thinking about?
Um, I was approached by the Football and Cheerleader Boosters Club about doing, um, some banner advertising. They had seen that Hengen and Marshfield do it. I wasn't, I wasn't aware that Hengen did it, but I knew Marshfield did it. Um, and they, where they haven't had a tremendous amount of ability to do any fundraising, they thought this might be a good opportunity to raise some funds. I presented it to our administration, they were in favor of it. That, what they proposed was, they would have, uh, two-by-five banners made, um, with the, the grommets that we would just hang on the fences throughout the property. They'd go up an hour prior to an event and come down after the event. This was strictly for football, um, home games. So, when I went to the school committee to make the proposal, they amended the proposal to make it all programs have the ability to do this and all levels. So it wouldn't be just varsity, it would be junior varsity, freshmen, any sport, any group that wanted to do it would have the ability to do it. They would have to, uh, seek out their advertisers, the Boosters Club would pay for the sign. Advertisers would make their donation and imagine that donations will vary. The individual boosters clubs, uh, keep 100% of the revenue. And again, it's their responsibility to, uh, put them up and take them down. With sub varsity events, I told them if they had banners, I, I would, with the assistance of, you know, some student athletes, we'd make sure that the banners went up during sub varsity games, so that they weren't going up just for varsity games. So I, I did appreciate the fact that the school committee did make that a program-wide recommendation that everybody could do that. And then of course, um, administration of school committee has to approve any advertiser and see the mock-up of any sign before it's actually produced. So, right now, nothing has been done because obviously they're waiting for approval, but, uh, this again would only be for one year. I have a, um, a goal of reaching out to potential sponsors for a video scoreboard. And we're hoping if we get some people that want to partake in the, the temporary banner advertising, maybe, you know, they follow suit with the, the scoreboard plan and then the, the money from the scoreboard goes to the school department that doesn't go to the individual booster club. So, this would be just a one-year proposal for them to kind of make some money to help support the programs. So, here we are.
Right. Questions from the board? You answered the only question I had is, who approves them? So that, obviously, there are some advertisers that wouldn't be appropriate for our school grounds, so I'm glad you have a school committee, I'll do that. More question, Curran?
Are the banners restricted to the specific sport that they are, um, boosting? So soccer boosters club can only hang an hour before, an hour after a varsity or JV soccer game? Or are they also open to hang those banners during a football game?
Uh, so, so, no, it would be for your individual sport.
Okay.
I misunderstood what you were asking. I could foresee like having one company sponsoring more than one sport.
Sure, absolutely.
Yeah, so that's.
I was more concerned about the number of banners that may be around the fencing, so if it's.
No, that, that wouldn't, that wouldn't work. We could have potentially every fence covered with a banner if that was the case.
Exactly, okay, good.
That wouldn't be attractive or whatnot at all.
Great, thank you.
Andrew?
Yeah, I'm just. So the, the approval's going to be essentially just up to the, to the whim of the school committee. Is, and I guess maybe this is a question for Chairman or someone else. I mean, if there's not complete structured clarity in the proposal, what's going to be accepted or not accepted? I mean, is there a legal liability if they say, no, I don't want that business or this other business, because it's?
No, I don't think so, because it's, happens in every other community around here. You reserve the right to accept the sponsors or the donations that you want. There's no legal obligation that you have to take somebody's.
Yeah, that's, that was my concern.
I mean, I think there's a, I understand what Scott's doing now, but I think there's a larger conversation that will have to be had over permanent advertisement or something like that as to, you know, where those funds go. But I think with this is the one year for the boosters to kind of make up, we don't have to have that conversation yet.
Well, I did, uh, talk to Mr. Wong, the Chair of the School Committee, about that very issue and that, you know, going forward, this has got to be a much larger conversation about where the funds go, because the town is, uh, responsible for maintenance of the entire facility outside. And so, we would, I'm sure as a board, want to at least consider some of the revenue coming to the town, not to the schools, to the town, so that the town can put it in whatever maintenance fund that we have, so that we're not, you know, bearing all the, the responsibility, the monetary responsibility for keeping the fields up, all the while understanding that boosters need to be able to raise money for their various teams and that the school department, you know, um, has, I believe, the responsibility of making sure that signage is appropriate, et cetera, et cetera. So, um, since this is temporary, I, I don't think we have to have that conversation tonight, but we definitely will in the future.
And your, your honesty is correct, um, as Jim knows, I have a lot of experience when it comes to maintaining these facilities. And people think that you build these facilities, you turn around and walk away and everything is all said. It's much more work than having natural grass fields. It takes a lot more work to maintain them. And if they're not maintained, they're not moved properly, they're not maintained, the life of the cockpit gets cut in half. Whereas if they are maintained properly, the cockpit can last five, six, seven years longer than what, what the original expectation was. So I, I know the value of the maintenance and, uh, I think that, that was a conversation I completely agree with, like, if we're generating X amount of dollars from a new video scoreboard or whatnot, maybe a certain percentage of that, like you say, is earmarked to the town.
Very good. We took a lot of heat for a long time about the condition of our fields and so we want to maintain this beautiful facility.
I mean, it's, everybody that I talk to say, you must be in heaven being there with those facilities. And I'm like, yes, I am.
And it's not just the fields, it takes almost a full day for the grounds department to do the entire complex with the mowers and the blowers and all that. We, we actually bought two special lawn mowers because we couldn't, behind the baseball field you have that, we didn't have any lawn mowers that could do that. So we bought special lawn mowers that can go on that type of slope. I won't drive them, but the guys, the guys like them.
And so far, the facility has been maintained spectacularly, it's beautiful. Looks like it was just built.
Well, it kind of was. Given the fact COVID last year, I mean, it could hardly be used.
Scott, uh, just, Scott and I go, Scott was the Athletic Director in Norwell for I don't know how long when I was working there. And he was the Athletic Director when we built the fields. And really, Scott understands that a lot of this onus has to be on the individual athletes. They have to keep it clean, they have to clean up after themselves, they have to take responsibility. And then we need as a, as the, the owners of the field,[1710.64] And then, we need, as the owners of the field, I know when I coached soccer, traveled soccer in Norwell, if the opposing team leaves a mess and I don't clean it up, then I get a nasty email saying, "If you do this again, your team will no longer be allowed to play on the turf." So, Scott was really instrumental in making that mindset that people always clean up. So, I think that's going to be very important going forward here.
Honestly, it did take pulling the permits from a couple of teams to make sure that everybody stood the message that we're serious about this. If you want this to be here 15 years from now, it has to be maintained today.
Very good. Thank you. Do we need to take a vote? I think we need to vote. Oh, sorry.
My only other question, it always kind of irked me, that is there still a prohibition for, like, parents to not be able to bring in a sign to some of those places? I just, philosophically, I love this idea that's there. I would just, I'm always in favor of, just walking right by the football stadium, no balloons, no noise makers, and no signs and no banners.
That's an MIAA rule.
So, parents cannot bring in a banner, but TK O'Malley's or some other business will be able to hang up a banner. Would love, I'd love to talk to the MIAA about that, but I can't support my son.
Good luck.
But, um, so, seriously, so, some parent.
Like to buy a mask.
Really can't put up a banner, but, so how can we move banners up to MIAA? You don't allow it.
You can put up banners, like senior night banners, those type of things, homecoming and whatnot. What they don't want is, they don't want kids in the stands with signs that could potentially have who knows what written on it, get tossed out onto a field during a game or whatnot. That's really what they're trying to stress. In my 20 years, I've never had issues with signs. Athletic directors run their facilities differently. If, you know, I see a group of students coming with a sign to support, you know, a fundraising type thing, I let them bring that sign in.
But, you do, I mean.
Yeah, I know exactly what you mean.
We're telling people, "You can't, but if you have money, you can." That's all, so.
No, because the boosters aren't always going to be, have an advertiser. They also will just be soliciting, right? Aren't they, like, soliciting funds? Not always, the boosters aren't always going to have an advertising partner, or are they?
No.
Yeah, no, it's not always going to be.
You have to pay money. No, I'm not upset at you. It's the MIAA.
No, I know what you're saying.
It's not, but someone has to pay to put the sign up, right?
Yeah. I do have one question, though.
Yes.
And then I'll let it go, and we'll just approve it, but, because it's great.
Yeah.
As you move forward, I don't know if some of the booster charters prohibit funds being used for maintenance. So, a lot of times, some of those charters are just used for team equipment and really, and so, I just suggest, as we move forward in the year two, just to take a look at some of those charters too, to make sure that their funds actually can go towards maintenance because some of them may not be written that way. Just food for thought.
You'll have to rewrite their charters.
Yeah, no, I know. And that's kind of my point.
Boosters could do the same as Situate, you could use the process, just make a donation to the town for the maintenance of the fields.
Yeah, if it's in their charter.
They'd have to twist some arms.
Yep.
Certainly a legitimate, that's as legitimate a request as anything.
Yeah. So, would you like a motion?
Well, I was going to say, Don Quixote is heading off to the MIAA, and good luck with that, apparently.
I'll bring him to the next meeting if you want.
I'd love to be there.
It's a very, obviously, I'm a member, I do do some tour and work along. Very, very difficult organization to work. The problem is, is the organization isn't run by people that are in education.
You can also sue them, but that's a whole different story.
They what?
I'll talk to you later about it.
Never mind. Do I hear a motion? Please.
Move to approve the temporary banner advertising for the 2021-2022 school year.
Second by?
Second.
Second by Mr. Goodrich. All in favor?
Aye.
Four zero. Motion carries.
Very much.
Thank you very much.
Nice to meet you all.
You as well, and welcome to Situate.
You're welcome.
Do you want us to get everyone an appointment?
I'll send me an email, please.
He knows where you are.
Yeah.
All right, next on our agenda is the outdoor entertainment permit for Fall for Situate, which will be held on October 24th, 2021, from 11:30 a.m. to 2:30 p.m. in North Situate. And do I?
What do we need to add, so?
Okay, so.
Just a simple request. We should add one.
You do have all the backup on it.
Yes.
An annual event is, where it's, but they, I think you said there's a revision? Oh, no.
Not on this, on the next one.
That's the next one. Okay, never mind. But it's a great, a great event, and everyone should get one.
So, it's a good event.
Would you like a motion on this?
Yes, I would, please.
Move to grant an outdoor entertainment permit to Jean, Dr. Maria, thank you, on behalf of the North Situate merchants for a band to perform at the 2021 Fall for Situate event held in the North Situate parking lot, town parking lot on October 24th, 2021, from 12 to 4 p.m.
Second. Second by Ms. Curran. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries four zero. Great event. And next is a special event permit for Art Walk requested by the Situate Harbor Cultural District. Is someone here to represent them?
Patrice should be here.
Are we ahead of schedule?
Not really.
Um, no.
Nope.
Obviously, Patrice and Michelle are more. Let me just say they're in our office.
Did they do this last year?
It's a new one.
We did nothing last year.
It wasn't last year because it goes.
A little different this year, though. Yeah. Pumping it up a little bit this year with some extra bands and, instead of just bands on the bandstands, there'll be actually a couple of bands in between the Hibernian and the Music Store on Front Street.
The Chalk Walk, one.
Yeah, that was a, that was a parental group.
Hello.
Hello, that's all right.
Patrice, how are you?
I'm cheering.
Very prompt.
Hi.
How are you?
Good.
How are you?
Good, thank you.
So, would you like to tell us about this year's artwork?
Sure. Well, actually, it's a funny coincidence that today, the last time I sat in this seat, I was asking for you to renew our designation for the Situate Harbor Cultural District, and just today, they approved it.
Oh, very good.
Yay.
Very good.
And I am representing that district for this request. This is actually like the 10th or 11th annual art walk, and I apologize for not knowing the exact number, but this precedes the district. So, the Harbor Merchants have had an art walk every year. It's one of the reasons we got the designation, and it's an opportunity for the community to see, you know, it's to intrigue people to come down to the Harbor and shop. But it also brings arts and culture to the common masses and just create serendipitous audience opportunities. So, we'll be building on that a little bit this year because we weren't able to have it last year and also in, you know, in celebration of our redesignation. So, as per usual, there'll be musicians, there will be visual artists, there will be probably language artists, and our goal is to pair different arts and cultural people with all the different shops. But there will, Jerry from the Music Store is also allowing us to use that vacant lot next to the Hibernian for a band to perform. The Dirty Martinis will be playing, and we plan to have soft horses up to, for traffic control, and that's basically it. It's going to be from 5:00 to 9:00 on September 10th. So, usually, it's in concert with First Fridays. This year, First Friday falls on Labor Day weekend, and we felt like we weren't going to get the same, you know, we weren't going to get the residents, so we might get people visiting Situate, but this is for the residents. And really, the district is about why Situate is a great place to live and play.
Very good. Questions from the board? Ms. Kenfield?
Well, you answered the first question was, this is, because the application said this is in, you know, in concert with First Friday, right?
No, First Friday. So, First Fridays have been moved. First September, it's actually Second Friday, which they're going to call it. That's confusing.
And then, one of the other questions I had was in the back, it was if necessary road closure, do you anticipate needing to do that or?
So, we had discussed that, and Michelle and I were just talking about this. She has brought this up with the police, and they don't believe that we need to close the road. That was, so we have investigated that, and they would like to see Jersey barriers or soft horses to prevent, you know, any, any people spilling into the streets while the traffic is going.
Yeah, great. Thank you for all your work on the cultural district.
It's great.
Mr. Goodrich?
I was just trying to help promote it. If people want more information, who should they go to?
So, we do have a Facebook account, and I should know this off the top of my head, but I don't. But if you go on Facebook and you write Situate Harbor Cultural District or Art Walk, it will pop up.
That's the best.
Yeah, and Marie Flaherty's business native, she does all the promotions, so it comes out of there.
Great.
You could also check out the Harbor Merchants Association.
Ms. Curran?
No, I'm good. I see that you have a police detail, so that's great by the band. That was going to be my, my one concern, but I see that you have that. So, I look forward, I will not be here, but I wish you all the luck. I'm sorry to miss it. Wish I was here, so.
So.
We have two motions, which we care.
Do we have two?
Yes.
Okay. The special event permit revision.
Yep. Would you like to add? Please. First motion is to move to approve a special event permit for Art Walk to be held on September 10th from 5:00 to 9:00 p.m. in Situate Harbor.
Do you want to do the second one?
And the second is move to approve an outdoor entertainment permit on September 10th in the area located between 111 and 121st Front Street in between the Hibernian Tavern and the Music Store.
Very good.
Do we need time on that?
I would be the same, 5:00 tomorrow.
Five to nine.
From 5:00 to 9:00 p.m. The band will be performing from 7:30 to 9:00.
So, let's amend that.
All right, so amended to be from 5:00 to 9:00 p.m.
7:30.
I'm sorry. You could, you could leave it more flexible just to allow the setup and.
Okay, okay. You're good.
So, what time do we want?
5:00 to 9:00.
5:00. We'll just leave it all at 5:00 to 9:00.
Just leave it all the same.
5:00 to 9:00 p.m.
Yeah.
As moved. Second?
Second by Ms. Curran. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries four zero.
Did you want to mention anything?
Mention what? I can't hear.
We can, we can mention, as we all know, this is going to coincide with the viewpoint version.
Yes, that would be good.
Good step forward.
Thank you, Mr. Gacy. Thank you for having me. He's trying to hide in the back. No such luck. As you know, this is going to coincide with the production, the viewpoint film production that's coming to town that same weekend, which will just be another avenue to promote Situate from the cultural side with the live.
Live.
The live, learn, play, and Situate.
It's a great place to live, you know, and celebrate and play, but it's, and to see the, our main commercial district completely activated and alive and full of people will give us our best step forward, I think. And if we're going to be investing in something like this, it makes sense to, to really do it.
Does the board know about this?
Some does, some.
Some do, some don't.
Yep.
Maybe no, nothing. Somebody want to explain?
So, Viewpoint with Dennis Quaid is a public television show where they come out and they spotlight people or communities. So, they had approached us probably a month and a half or so ago, and we investigated, actually, it was more than that because Karen was still the chair, so it was more than that. And we looked at it with this EDC as whether this is something we'd like to pursue. And what they do is they do about a five-minute spotlight on the town that's then shown on public television all over the country.
Nice.
And they also provide us with a 60-minute, for lack of a better term, commercial, advertisement for the town that then is ours, and we can use all that stuff on all our social media platforms, anywhere we want. It's all a production. There is a cost to it that we're doing through the EDC that I could fill you in on, but we will get a total professional production-level program highlighting Situate, Mass. as a place to live, laugh, what do you say, love?
I realize, it's live, work, and play.
Yes.
And I was messing that with my own phrase.
Dennis Quaid, not Randy Quaid.
Dennis Quaid.
Okay. A lot of the.
Yeah. Big Vacation Two. All right. I don't think we see Dennis. I don't think Dennis comes to town. Unfortunately, I don't think we get Dennis Quaid.
And they're coming on the 10th?
I believe so, yeah.
Yeah, so they'll be here early in the morning doing interviews, you know, doing a lot of historical sites and really filming a lot of, you know, Situate, the harbor, you know, lots and power, historical sites. And the opportunity for the Art Walk, where we hadn't selected a date yet, really worked out perfect that we could coincide the two so they can end that day with a lot of B-roll of all the, you know, the musicians and artists and so on.
We also provided them links to all our catalog of Situate Television and any B-roll they might want to take from there. And we told them, you know, you want some drone footage? We can fly some drones for you, get some drone footage. So, when I first saw it, I was like, "Eh, I don't know." And then, speaking to the EDC and Karen, I think, I think it could be exciting, and we'll have a local, they want some local flavors, so. I think Joby Norton is going to be the local businessman with his new business. We thought he would be perfect, and some other people. So, we'll see what it looks like, but, you know, as long as it's not Randy Quaid, it's safe. I think we'll be okay.
So, everyone should come to First Friday and Second Friday. That's right. So, Maury, you're going to have to cancel your plans and make sure you're there.
Yes, that'll happen. Thank you.
But Dennis Quaid's not coming, so don't cancel it if you're thinking.
Well, good. Thanks, Michelle, for sharing that news. That's exciting news.
Hope the weather's good? Yes, it's always a, it's always a challenge.
They actually wanted a little more lead time, but we were, we were closing that envelope because we wanted to make sure they got here while the boats were all still in the water and.
Yeah.
The harbor was still busy. We were like, "Yeah, you got to come in, in January." I'm not sure a lot of people are going to want to live, work, and, and come stay here. It's not the best time to come film.
Work and shovel.
Yeah, don't come during hurricane season.
Unless you're Jim Cantori, then we know we're in trouble.
I was just going to say that, Joe. All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Great. Thanks, Patrice.
We have discussed vote, simply, suddenly simple events, one-day wine and malt at the Collective Company on 8/28 from 11:30 to 2:30 for a private event. Melissa Peralta, owner. Hello, Melissa. How are you?
Very good, thank you.
Very good. For those of you who don't know, I had the pleasure of meeting Melissa when she was applying for a grant. I don't know if you've heard from them yet, from the state.
I, I think Rachel applied.
Oh, I'm sorry, it was Rachel. I'm sorry.
I'll take that as a total compliment that you think I'm her, though.
Both very attractive women.
Thank you.
So, at any rate, this is a new business in North Situate, and maybe you'd like to tell us about the business because I think a lot of people probably don't know about it yet.
Yeah, the Collective Co. is a fabulous space. I'm a member there. It's a coworking space geared towards female entrepreneurs. It's a phenomenal community, and Rachel is just an incredible powerhouse. She's doing so much for not only the community within the Collective Co., but the community of North Situate and just local entrepreneurs in general.
Good.
Yeah.
So, you're having a special event?
Yes, um, I've been hired to do, um, there's a bartending, uh, so I'll be bartending for a bridal shower there, um, this weekend.
Very good.
Yes.
All right. So does anyone have any questions?
I see that your tip's certified and it's just yourself serving?
Yes.
Okay, perfect.
And I also believe you have my insurance policy and all that stuff, yeah.
So the background is in order. Do you like a motion?
Yes, please.
Uh, move to approve a one-day wine and malt license to Melissa Peralta. Uh, suddenly simple events for Brook Street for private event at the Collective Company, four hundred Gannett Road on, on August twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-one, uh, from eleven thirty A M. to two thirty P M.
Second?
Second?
Second. I heard Miss Karen, second by Miss Karen. All in favor? Aye. Motion carries four zero. Thank you. Thank you, Melissa.
Thank you very much. Have a good night.
Good luck with your business.
Thank you.
It's a beautiful space.
It is. It's very lovely. Now we're on to interview board and committee applicants. Our first applicant is, I've got to get my notes out here, is Josh Sigsworth. Sigsworth. Come on up. And I know you had applied for a number of committees, which we greatly appreciate. Uh, two of the committees don't have any, um, openings on them, but the Commission on Disabilities does. So thank you for applying and maybe you could tell us a little bit about yourself and why you're interested in this committee.
Sure. Um, thank you, everybody, for, for having me today and interviewing for the position. Uh, my name is Josh Sigsworth and I just recently moved to Situate about four months ago. And, um, I've, uh, I'm a physical therapist for the Boston Visiting Nurse Association. I've been a home health physical therapist for about ten years, so I've been dealing a lot with, uh, the population that has disabilities. And I feel like I could be a really valuable tool for you guys to use and be able to help a lot of people. And I've been, I've been volunteering for over a decade, whether it's the Boston Marathon, the Charles Boat Race Regatta, Therapists Without Borders in Peru. Um, you know, I, I created the first, um, uh, medical records in Peru for the school, for the first school for disabled children in Cusco. And, um, my goals are to find out where I can make a difference and, you know, that's why I'm here and here to help, so. Oh, also for background, I have a bachelor's in biology and I have a doctorate in, in physical therapy.
Impressive. Thank you, Dr. Sigsworth. Mr. Goodrich, any questions?
Sure. So, um, I'm the liaison, liaison, uh, to the Commission on Disabilities. And I just, I'd love to hear, just being around, we, we talk a lot about access and as an older town, it's, can be very difficult and challenging in certain places. Are there any things, um, or areas that you'd like to address around access?
Yeah, definitely. Uh, when I was in, in graduate school, we actually, it was an, uh, it was an experiment. You were actually, uh, you had to go into a wheelchair and you had to wheel yourself around a town and interact with how you can, uh, negotiate the terrain in a wheelchair. And, um, it's something that, it's an experiment, could be a pilot project, something like that to think about. Um, and there's a lot of different other things like to be the American Disability Act compliant with stairs, coding, doorways. Uh, I do a lot of wheelchair assessments. Um, I did one today as well. Uh, and so, yeah, I have a lot of ideas to be able to better make Situate a more accessible town because as we go into twenty twenty-one and beyond, you know, it's going to be something that's important for everybody. So, yeah.
Thank you.
Um, thank you for coming forward. Sounds like you have great expertise. Is there anything that you've noticed in town that you think needs immediate addressing as you, you know, with your different perspective?
It's probably something that I need to, like, take a walk around, like, because, you know, I really hadn't looked at it, at that type of perspective yet. And so you just brought it up, so I think it'd be a good idea. And my wife's also a doctor in physical therapy. It's something that we can kind of talk with each other about. Um, yeah, it's something that I could definitely take a look around and start checking around.
Good. Okay, great. Um, we did just do a big facility study, so you'll have that at your fingertips should you be appointed. So that'll be a good thing to take a look at. Um, and I'm sure the committee will welcome your, your perspective and your expertise. So thank you for coming forward.
Thank you, yeah. I, I really hope I can help out. Um, again, today I, I treat patients all the time that, whether it's uh, negotiating their insurances to be able to get ambulance transport because they can't go up and downstairs. I have a vast network of doctors, PAs, NPs, social workers, OTs, so, speech, language pathologists. Um, I'm pretty active with, uh, the, the literature, the A P T A, like especially for our COVID patients. Um, I've treated over hundreds of, of COVID patients during the pandemic. And, um, and at Dartmouth Medical Center in New Hampshire, they actually have a now long, long haul, a long hauler program that would be, uh, could benefit to people that are battling this for the long term. So a lot of resources that I think I can help out with.
Great. Karen?
So obviously you have an understanding of the A D A laws and compliance and all of that because that obviously comes through board this commission, um, occasionally. The only question I have is have you had a chance to talk to any of the, um, members on any of the committees that you are interested in? Especially disabilities. Have you had a chance to meet any yet?
No, no, I, I haven't. I did look them up. I, I understand, uh, like, at service level who they are, but it would be nice to be able to talk with them and be able to get their point of view of what they do because I've never been on a commission for disabilities, but I would like to be able to talk with them and see what they have to know.
They're robust and great group, so. Great. That's all I have. Thank you so much. Welcome to town.
Thank you, yeah, we love it.
For jumping in.
Yeah, thank you.
Do you have any questions for us?
Um, no, not specifically, but I may later on.
Good, good. Thank you very much. Thank you for coming in. Um, we are probably going to vote this tonight, right, Lorraine? Yeah, later in the evening. Well, it's so enjoyable here, isn't it?
I will stick around just because I wanted to see everything else.
If you decide you need to leave, we will take offense.
No.
And Lorraine will get in touch with you tomorrow should it, you know, something happen and we not get to it, so. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is Susan Casey for the Beautification Committee. Hello, Susan. How are you?
Good, how are you?
Very good. So would you like to tell us a little bit about yourself and why you're interested in the Beautification Committee?
Sure. Um, I moved to Situate about a year ago. Uh, I just moved from Attleboro where I was a just recent retired art teacher for thirty years. And, um, I moved from a lovely home with lots of garden space and moved to a condo off Community Drive Way and with very little garden. So, um, I got roped into the, um, the dockal lot by a couple of my kayak buddies, um, nearby. So we get talking about downtown and I, I have a couple of little blocks down by the marina, which is lovely because I can weed and people come by and thank me for doing that.
You do a great job. It looks beautiful down there.
It really is. And I, I think it's, um, I think in my hometown, I always felt like the garden club was kind of a a loose little community that nobody wanted to be a part of. And I, I just can't, the people that I've met here, um, the shipshape day I got involved with is quite outdoor, um, and things. And it was just really warm for my heart to know that people are here to name the city, clean up town and walk along the drive way. And this is a story for another day, but it drives me crazy with the amount of trash that, you know, gets deposited in there. So I always do my pickup along the way. But, um, this position became open and I just thought it would be a great opportunity for me to do something for the town. And I think I'm open for it.
So Maury is our liaison to the beautification.
I am. I mean, you know, how can you say no? You're already volunteering and doing a great job down by the harbor, so. Um, any issues? You said you retired. Any issues, uh, attending their meetings? A lot of times they meet in the middle of the day. You know, most, most of our committees meet in the evening? Wait, did you say you retired? No, you just said you moved.
They're texting me because they start tomorrow and I don't.
You are retired, right? Did you say that? Yeah. Not that that matters, but I do know that this particular committee seems to meet a lot in the daylight hours.
I did this a couple of meetings, um, these were late. Not, they, they, but they were.
Sure. So just wanted to throw that out there.
We have this way of them finding me.
Oh, they're good at that, yeah.
Yeah, um, we, we just adopted the Maritime Center, so we're over there these days.
Yay, thank you, thank you.
Very good.
Sure, Stephen will be happy about that. Yes, he's thrilled.
He's a kind of a shy guy sometimes.
Are there a number of them because?
Harbor masters?
Yes.
Well, there's a number of people who work for him, but he's, he's the head guy. Steve.
Okay. He is, he is.
Tall guy. He's the tall one.
So yes, um, hoping that, um, if you say no, then it's going to be great because then I can go back out kayaking.
We're not saying no.
Did we say no?
So thank you.
Andrew, any?
No, I mean, no better resume than past experience and fabulous, so thank you.
And a willingness to work.
Yes.
I'm just delighted that both, both of our candidates have been here only a year and they're willing to help the community, so.
That's great.
Great thing to have. You won't regret it, honestly. It's a great way to meet folks, too. We might regret it, but don't.
It's true. Very true.
You won't, it's awesome. So, um, this is a, a position we will be, uh, voting tonight as well, likely. Um, now we have Susan Grandine, I'm sorry. Yes, yes. Oh, yes.
It's getting a little dark out.
Dowar? So you, Susan and Susan, you know each other?
We actually just met last week.
Oh, all right.
I'm aware, though. Don't tell them I know.
Okay.
Well, that's no fun.
So Animal Control Board, would you like to tell us, um, a little bit about yourself and why you're interested in that committee?
Sure. Um, my husband and I have been living in Situate for about fourteen years now. Uh, we love it. He's a South Shore native, um, I'm from the North Shore, so it was a little bit of a.
Uh-oh.
New experience.
You came to the other side, did you?
Crossed through Boston and come down here. Um, but.
Talk to my wife.
We, uh, we love it. Um, I, uh, was working in Boston though, full-time and traveling quite a bit, so I didn't really have an opportunity early on to get involved with a lot of things around here. But a few years ago, I said goodbye to the corporate world and set up my own practice down here and, you know, have had more opportunities to enjoy what Situate has to offer, but, you know, also to give back. So a few years ago, I joined the Friends of Situate Dog Park Committee, um, and worked on the build and, uh, maintenance and fundraising for the park and, and love it, um, and learned a lot. So when this opportunity came out, I thought, well, it might be a nice step and a nice way for me to expand my involvement and helping for the town.
Thank you. I mangled your name. Could you tell me your name so that I didn't, so the people know what your name is?
Brondine Dowar.
Okay, Brondine Dowar.
Yes.
Very good. Thank you. Maury, any questions?
Are you familiar with what the Animal Control Board does? Because I think sometimes it can be, um, some difficult decision-making that's involved. Um, so just curious.
Yeah, I think we talked to Kim Stewart.
Okay.
And so she was helpful and gave me a little.
Great. Well, there's no better resource than Kim, yes.
Yeah, she's, she's fabulous.
Yeah, okay. So I just wanted to make sure that.
Yeah, and, uh, you know, my, my background being an attorney and.
Right. Certainly helps.
Yeah, wouldn't shy away from difficult situations. And I, and I think I could handle it with the appropriate amount of sentiment and then, uh, while balancing public safety.
Right, right. Thank you.
Perfect, that's perfect.
Karen? I would just note that we've been very fortunate that this board has been very dormant for a long time. So it's important to be, um, populated because if something comes up, we need appropriate people. So, you know, having your, your work on the dog park has been phenomenal. So I think that will give, I would think the residents a lot of comfort in that should, should decisions have to be made that there's somebody that is very empathic.
And it, it's been a great experience with the dog park, but certainly not without issue. I mean, we, we're people, people, animal, animal, animals.
The animals get it wrong.
We've had a few.
It's the people we have the problems with, not necessarily the animals.
Uh, ninety-nine percent of the time, it's the germs and.
My daughter's there every morning.
Is she? Oh, good for her. Well, she's got the dog, right?
She's got the COVID. She thinks he's there every morning.
We have had a big influx of.
Yes.
New dogs, a lot of puppies, but a lot of, you know.
New owners.
And all those, yes.
Yeah.
Hopefully we'll be able to get back to some of our educational programming and fundraising. COVID, um, so, and it's hard.
Oh, did it?
Stop things, so.
Well, COVID unfortunately results in a lot of new voters, resulting in more accidents and more new golfers with golf balls going all over Widow's Walk, so, um, unintended consequences.
Those balls were for my husband.
My husband was there recently and congratulated himself he didn't lose any balls, so I was like, oh, that's good, that's pretty good. Yeah. So, well, we will be voting this later, so hopefully you'll hear from Lorraine tomorrow. If you don't see us on TV, we are on TV.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you for coming in. Richard Beekman. Mr. Beekman, how are you?
Hey, how are you?
Very good. You're here for the Situate Beach Commission?
Yes.
Perhaps you'd like to tell us about yourself and why the Beach Commission?
Sure. So I'm also relatively new here, uh, three years. Uh, we were in Marshfield for four or five years before that, uh, two young children. I work in travel, so pandemic's been. My wife is in events, so same, same thing. So, uh, you know, we're hoping with the new, uh, work-from-home policies, we get to spend a lot more time. As far as the Beach Commission, it's not, I mean, there was an email sent saying we need people. Uh, so it's more out of wanting to be more involved in the community. During COVID, Mr. Boudreaux over here is like, uh, a rock star. I watch him every, I watch him every Monday. Same with all of you.
We keep talking there.
No, every Monday, every Monday.
All broken down.
I watch the, I watch the updates. Uh, so I, I just want, with the young kids, I want to be more involved in the town and I don't have the, I mean, I go to the beach. Uh, I'm, I'm very impressed with the credentials of, who've been up here so far. Uh, I don't really, I can't say the same other than being competent, a general competence. You know, there's nothing specific about the Beach Commission. I, I applied to three different commissions and it was more out of.
Your third choice?
Yeah, it was. But it was more out of civic.
Yeah.
Duty than anything else.
We like that. Okay.
Well, there are others on the other committees, but we're just going to, because other committees can do for those other committees.
Yeah, yeah.
But it's fine, honestly.
Do you have a preference?
Well, the only one, the, um, the sister town Cork, like, so I lived in Cork and I, uh, I studied there, uh, in college. And I'm in travel, so I thought like the best fit would have been that one, but honestly, I don't. And I lived on First Cliff, so the other one was the, um.
Coastal.
Coastal, because so, and then the beach one was more, I don't know, I like the beach. I moved to Situate for the beaches, so, uh, so the other two, uh, were a little more, you know, subject focused. This was more, I help where I can.
Well, I think we'll probably take that into account when we start to look at where we've got openings and where we have need.
Yep, honestly.
If you're willing to be flexible.
I'm happy to fit wherever you need. It's not, not a big deal to me.
Have you, have you, are you aware of the, the work that the Cork group has been doing on the Heritage Trail?
Uh, oh, I, I know about the Heritage Trail.
Yeah.
I didn't, I didn't know that they were involved, but.
They're, they're powerful.
Practically leading the charge, right?
Yeah.
Close to it.
Well, yeah, Brenda Conner, who is, um, the former chair and now a member, and Saban Hunter, who's the current, um, who's the current chair, have been instrumental in getting grants from the Irish government and it's going to launch, I think, next summer. It's about ready to go.
Yeah, I saw that.
They're going to need all hands on deck because it's, it's going to be a very, it's a very active, all of both, well, all of these committees are going to be very active. But that in particular is, uh, well-oiled machines. It could do worse. Questions?
No, I mean, I, I'm just looking at the sister city.
There are three openings, um, so if that's your preference.
Again, I, if there's others who are more passionate, honestly, I'm here to help the town. So if people are like diehard on that, I, I can do anything.
Do you have a lot of good, um, attributes for, I mean, you lived in Cork, you work in the travel industry, right? So this is all about sharing best practices across the, I mean. If, if that is something that you prefer, there's an opening, so don't be shy, don't.
There's more of a direct.
Don't let us peg you into a committee. You know, you need to be happy and.
I guess what I would say, if there's other people who are also qualified and are very passionate about being on there, I would kind of let them.
Not sure.
Do it.
Rest assured, we will find a spot for you. Yes. Yeah, so, yeah, there are three openings and I think four applicants, one, I think, with someplace else. And, uh, great, okay, so we'll probably won't be voting this tonight, but.
No, we won't.
Okay.
This is a puzzle we have to, and Lorraine is sort of in charge of the puzzles, so.
Sure, yeah, again, I'm, I just want to help.
It's great when we get possible.
I just want to get, I, I'd like to get more involved with the town.
We will, we will.
That's all it is.
You're not leaving without an assignment.
All right, okay.
All right. Did you have something you wanted to mention, Lorraine?
No, just that I, you know, love the application people. And there's several people that they continue to go through each of these committees, so it's been a while. Probably they had to some time.
I'm, I'm at your service.
So thank you for your patience.
Yeah, of course.
Much appreciated.
Of course, of course.
All right. Thank you for coming in.
All right, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Connor Doherty? I don't either. Unless he's out in the hallway.
No, I just checked over there.
Okay.
And I don't get marked up unless. But Braden Mills, yeah.
Who? I'm sorry. Come on up, who? So, Mr. McMillan, tell us about yourself.
My name's Flan McMillan and I own and operate a marine business in Situate Harbor. We have the emborers and all the service. As a result of, um, working in the harbor and kind of falling in love with the harbor, I had a heart, the waterway, seven years ago. Spent about eight years as an associate in there full-time and then the last year and a half, I was a chairman of the waterways. The harbor was my passion. My first hour of working, my first real work with Situate, economic development with the boat show in nineteen ninety-five. And we were promoting Situate. And the time to do was promote Situate as a destination port. Uh, it had everything. So we went with that as being, um, the major port between Boston and the canal and everywhere else. And twenty-five years later, we are now the destination port for this whole north and south shore area.
A lot has changed in twenty-five years.
A lot has changed, but for the better.
Yes.
It's getting better all the time.
Yes.
So mainly what I'm interested in is, um, in twenty thirteen, I think they came up with a study and it kind of reiterated all of the things that we had been talking about for years about economic development and more towards the harbor and the tourism end of it. And since then, and that's a great thought of the pandemic, um, we've actually got some positive spin out of it between the Situate Labs, although which I was involved in.
Oh, good.
And now we're involved in the, um, Situate Visitor Center, the E D C, and it's, uh, it's just rolling forward like crazy. And, um, it, it, the COVID pandemic has actually been a plus for us to get this all together. And as it gets less ominous, I think we're really going to break out here awful lot. So I think the next step, I would love to be involved with the actual economic. So I think the next step, I would love to be involved with the actual economic development committees and, um, see what we can do with that.
Very good. Ms. Canfield is nodding enthusiastically.
I'm enthusiastic about this. So bad news is we lost RJ Dwyer, who served for a long time on the EDC. He's moved to the North Shore, but we'll forgive him if he ever comes back. But that does give us one opening. And I had the pleasure of getting to know Fran, working on the Situate Labs logo, I, over a year ago. And I got to tell you, we couldn't ask for somebody better to put on this committee. He knows, he knows the committee members and he's worked with them now for unfortunately 18 months on many projects. And, um, you know, to me, it's, uh, to add Fran is, is, is just a formality at this point. And we, you know, we would not be doing our service if we did not include him. So that's my strong endorsement.
Very good. Anybody have any questions?
No, I only, the only thing that, did you move to Situate, Fran, or are you still?
I am not.
You're not a Situate resident, right?
I am a resident, um, twenty-two and a half hours a day in the harbor.
No, I know you're a business owner, you're here. No, 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 I do, I do.
No, I'm not a resident. I've always considered myself more of a, a business contributor, if anything else.
And no doubt, the program that you did, bringing everybody to the harbor. And you also, don't you take part, do you take part in going to the boat shows as well?
We've been promoting, I have been promoting Situate for, aside from last year, which was the first one missed, for 27 years. And, um, like I said, we want to make Situate a destination. It's got everything the boat needs and it's worked out fast. And we have become that destination towards our goal.
Yeah, I think my only question is, you know, what our policy is about, appointing folks that don't actually live in Situate. But I mean, Fran conducts a great amount of business here.
And we have done it. It's rare that we have done it.
I'm just raising it so we're being fair, because we've also removed people because they don't live in Situate over the years. So just want to be transparent. But I think you'd be a great asset.
If Jack Welch wanted to join. If you dare step foot. We'll let him in. The people who have such great experience, I think, should be as welcome in, you know.
Probably not.
So, Lorraine, do we have any other applicants for this committee?
We do not.
Okay.
One of them, the last kid.
Okay.
Nobody likes to be embarrassed.
All right. Well, thank you for coming in and thank you for all you've done for the past 25 years.
Oh, just more, we haven't started yet.
Oh, yeah. Great, we'd love to hear that. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your time.
Yours we will be voting tonight on that committee. So that does it for interviews. Now we have discussed vote review, approves. Sometimes I can read with my glasses, sometimes I can't. Special Town Meeting warrant articles, Jim Boudreau, Town Administrator, and Nancy Holt, Town Accountant, Finance Director. Hello, Nancy.
Hello, who is the board today?
Very good.
Do you, you have the backup?
Yes.
For the warrant articles, I'm not sure, do you want us to go through them or do you want to just ask questions as we go through?
This is actually an updated copy printed in front of you.
So how would the board like to, do we just want to go through and say Article One, any questions?
Yeah.
Article One is unpaid bills.
Any questions?
No.
Nope.
Article Two is budget reconciliations for fiscal year 2022. The big hit on there is the hauling cost for the transfer station, which is $90,000.
We're just voting tonight to put on, correct?
Right. Not to approve or not approve.
No.
Article Three is transfers to reserves, there's three listed there. What is WAC Capital Stabilization, OPEB, and SPED Reserve Fund?
So there was a question about the SPED Reserve Fund. We did vote as a town to set it up and we did not fund it at the time we set it up. So now this is an article requesting that we fund it.
Put some money in, correct.
Remind me again what the SPED Reserve Fund does?
So the SPED Reserve Fund is exactly what it said, it's a reserve fund to be used, voted by the town in case of extraordinary unforeseen SPED expenses.
For SPED?
SPED, that's correct.
Which happens, for example, when a new student moves into town and it's a just unanticipated cost.
Student moves in in, in August and there are an outplacement, the budget was done in April. So obviously, that's not budget, that could be a six-figure outplacement by the time you're done. Obviously, that's not something that the school budget can absorb. So rather than have to go into a free cash or some other fund, you would actually set money aside over time so that you would have money available should you have an incident where the SPED account took a big hit.
But it would have to be extraordinary, right? That the school department couldn't decide.
Well, it's, it's, it's come back and, just because it's in the fund, you have to come back to town meeting to get it.
Okay.
So they can't.
They can't just say, oh, well, you know, we'll, we'll take it out of that fund and
It's slightly different than a stabilization fund.
They can just spend it?
It requires two votes, school committee has to vote and select board has to vote to take funds out.
Not advisory?
No. It's those two committees and boards that have to vote to agree that the fund should come out.
It's not, it's not designed to be a place where they fund their budget. It's designed to be
That's exactly what I'm hearing.
Extraordinary or unforeseen, as a, you know, the example in the superintendents here. But, you know, the example that I used is something that would be when you'd hit the SPED fund off. You had several move in and you had to hire a new teacher because you had to set up a new classroom based upon their particular disabilities. And that wasn't unforeseen.
Right.
And there is a limit on this, it can't exceed more than 2% of net school spending, so it's between $800,000 and $900,000. So it's not a fund that can balloon.
Could you say that again?
So the, the, the reserve fund is limited at only 2% of net school spending, which is between $800,000 and $900,000 for the town of Situate.
So it's a cap on the amount of money that could actually be in that fund.
Correct.
It does, it rolls over.
Yeah, it'll, it'll continue to roll.
Continue.
Nope, that was my question.
Okay. Karen?
Just two quick things. So the original warrant setting up the reserve, was it clear in that warrant article I just recalled that the authority for distribution is the school committee and the select board?
I don't think so, just was setting up to start the fund, yeah.
It's in the statute. We accepted the local option statute, the statute dictates how you put money in, take money out, and the limits. So it's not, it's not at our discretion.
Okay, great. And then to be clear, so in Jim's scenario, a child moves in in August and it's an extraordinary expense. And we approve it and we place that funding, the anticipation is the next year, the superintendent would incorporate that budget in, that number in their budget, their regular budget.
Correct.
It wouldn't rely on the reserve for that going forward.
Correct.
Okay. I just wanted to state that. Great.
And I didn't add any more reserves to this list because we are talking later about financial policies, so where we want our reserves.
Our favorite topic.
So you can always add more reserves if you want, I have no, I have no quibble with that.
We can add more, yes. But we don't have to add anything at all to this particular
You don't have to do any, you could choose not to put this article on at all.
So, Article Four, feasibility study and schematic design for Hatherley Elementary School. I see the superintendent is here, so perhaps he could come up? Mr. Burkhead?
I understand from talking to Jim and by our notes, that this article was basically written by the MSBA, the Mass School Building Authority. It's their recommended language to us. I think when you read it, there may be some confusion about, it seems to refer only to Hatherley and not to Cushing School. So maybe you can explain what the intent of this article is and what the intent of the feasibility study is.
Sure. Good evening, Madam Chair, good evening, Select Board, pleasure to be here and thank you for the opportunity. This money is, is the first step in the process for attaining a new school building and to basically hire a owner's project manager or an OPM to oversee the project and to begin the schematic design of the building and to get things rolling. So MSBA does have the towns commit to this first step in attaining this money. There's a possibility of reimbursement of a portion of this money as well, I do want to add that. So the purpose is for those reasons to, to kick into the second phase, which is the feasibility study. And so I think that's, you know, what we're here for tonight, that's, and I guess the, um, what the building turns out to be, it is noted as the Hatherley Project. However, when we get to the feasibility study, there's a lot of things that are taken into account, including population, division of the district, the shape of our schools, and they'll look at Cushing and Hatherley. And so one of the options is that just to replace Hatherley, although I don't see that as being a reasonable option because it's such a small school and MSBA usually doesn't take on these projects unless it's a larger project. So the, the likelihood of combining the Cushing and the Hatherley School into one building project is what we anticipate. But that would have to be played out through this feasibility study.
Many public hearings, lots of input from the community. I think, I think the only thing is we all understand that this is a big step to take in terms of money. And that, you know, once you get into that, you get into people saying, well, you've spent the money now, if you're not going to go ahead with it. But I would say if people feel strongly about it, they come to this town meeting because this will sink or swim based on what town meeting votes in October.
I agree fully, yes.
And it's a big, it's a big ask for, you know, 1.1 million, whatever it is. Questions from the board?
That was my only question is, I, I know it's language that they like, but it does not have a, a not to exceed or a number amount on the warrant. So how does that work?
It would be in the motion.
The actual motion and, okay.
So the language itself was what MSBA approved.
Okay, so we would move that
We did write the article, they provided the draft article, we went after where we might think the funding would come from. And this is the, the language that they provided to us to use.
So when we say replace Hatherley, it doesn't mean we wouldn't close Cushing?
Excuse me, can you repeat that?
When we say replace Hatherley, it doesn't mean we wouldn't close Cushing?
Correct, that would be determined based on, like I said, the, the building committee that we established, the, the feasibility study and all that data, which would be very public, and then a decision will be made. And the shape of the schools, that kind of thing.
Yes, I, because if you go to either one of those schools, they look remarkably the same in terms of what the condition is and all that.
Absolutely, and they're both in, in pretty tough shape.
So my, my question is too, we have replacement of roofs, I believe, at Cushing and Hatherley and a number of other projects on the capital plan. We wouldn't, at what point do we decide we're not going through with those projects?
So what we've been doing in the past, uh, the past since I've been here at those schools, once we started on this process, we are really only doing life safety type of things that need to be done. We did fire alarms and things like that in the, uh, one of the schools not too long ago. So like a roof replacement, we wouldn't get on that road. When I was in Norwell, we tore down the Goldman Middle School and we were still paying on the roof. So, um, it's, it's not a situation we want to be in. So we would look to do those things that had to be done in order to make the school safe, in order to make it so that there was no interruption of the learning there. But we wouldn't do any long-term major projects to the building envelope or things like that until we were at a point where we knew, yes, we were going forward or no, we weren't.
All right. More?
Full support of the article, lots of questions about the funding. Can we entertain those tonight or?
Yeah.
Is that for another night? Okay. So a couple, so Nancy has very diligently gone and researched lots of different lines to pull money to support this, which is terrific. And thank you, Nancy, you do that always so well. Couple of things bother me, athletic fields need security, so I
It's unlikely that we could use those funds, it was identified as a potential, but it's unlikely, so the comment
Comment to the right means unlikely, okay, okay. Biggest one here, obviously, is the kindergarten $450,000 that we all approved months ago to give to the schools to support full-day kindergarten. Why wasn't that used?
They didn't need it. We did receive some CARES Act reimbursement for the kindergarten teachers.
Okay. And, but is that a full, is that a full, that CARES Act, is that a one-time?
That was a one-time, and this was only for 20, for the year 2021, for the hybrid kindergarten program. It wasn't specifically full-day kindergarten at no cost, it was for the hybrid kindergarten program. Because none of the kids got to go full-day. So the, the, the select board could choose to take that back to town, to town meeting and say, we're going to put it back in stabilization fund. And that's why there's the comment that the select board needs to decide what they want to do about that article, it was not used. Same with the COVID deficit for fiscal '21. Appropriated money at the special town meeting in the spring in case we had a deficit. We did not have those funds, they were not used. Doesn't mean they have to be used for this purpose, I was just trying to identify any potential plot that they had money in it.
Okay.
So we can list it out.
Just so the security of the athletic fields is basically security cameras.
Yeah, because actually that was one of my questions I didn't ask you when you were doing the overview of the, also the skate park.
Yeah.
So I know there's been some concern about graffiti and things that takes place out there, and that's sort of why I'm asking as well.
Well, as we were going through the project, we were, security was kind of the last thing and
Sure.
we're at the point now, I think Mike has a cost for the cameras, it's right around 35. So we're looking to, to cobble together a couple bucks and just get that done.
Similar.
We want to make sure we have cameras out there so we can see what's going on.
Okay.
The skate park might be covered, I'll have to check with, with the school's IT, with Mike Mincello, whether it's covered by cameras on the exterior of the building now, I don't know.
All right, so just so I understand, because I just want to make sure, I guess I misunderstood. So the $450,000 was just for 2020, last year. And it was never utilized, so, okay. Are you, do you anticipate coming back and asking for, to utilize it for the upcoming year? Or is, are we not allowed to do that because we made it past a contingent for a specific year, just not?
It was for a specific year and a specific purpose, so you'd have to, it's in that account.
Right.
So it can't be spent on anything right now because we've already closed that out, it's done. So any other use of that money has to go back to town meeting to be voted to move
Okay.
someplace else, back in the stabilization for this, for whatever, it has to go back to town meeting.
And if we choose to keep this, we just have to be really, really clear about that, because that's going to be a big question. Okay.
I have a response to that, Ms. Conner?
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, we've, uh, your question was, will we be coming back for that? We've included in our budget coverage of all costs for kindergarten this year, so there'll be no fees. So, yeah, we're, that's been approved and done, so we won't be coming back for any money.
Okay. That's, that's, those are really my big questions on that, it's just
And then when we, when we put that money up, the understanding was, if we get the CARES Act money, then we're not going to spend this. And
Right.
Everybody held a libocum, they said, okay, we got the CARES Act money, we don't need to spend this. And now it's available to be used someplace else, or not used at all.
Okay. So we're still pretty shy, there's a 1.1 million here. What are we thinking?
I would say go to free cash. And I was hoping to have the certification for tonight's meeting, but we, I think it's likely we'll have our free cash and retained earnings certification this week. But there would be, from my estimates, there would be sufficient funds to fund the difference, whether it be the full amount or just the difference between these articles and that amount.
Okay.
Andrew?
Actually, kind of going back to your question, I know that this feasibility study will be, to help answer that question, but your initial thought is that it's, that we'll be closing down Hatherley and Cushing and building a new school? That that is the likelihood?
Yeah, they did a preliminary study, sorry to interrupt, they, yeah, they did a preliminary study and that was what the groups before I was here in Situate come up with, there was a lot of research on that. That may change, but that's what I'm going by and that's the need I see because something they look at is, you know, the reoccurring costs. And, you know, like Mr. Boudreau said, we put, we're putting a lot of money into those buildings and they kind of look at that and they say, you know, out of the two buildings, is it more cost efficient to close them both and, and open one new school? And so I think there's a lot of evidence that I've seen to support that.
Close, close down to one large one, okay.
Well, and redistricting, right?
Yeah, redistrict.
Yeah, I, I think there was also when they did the study for the middle school, there was a lot of work done on grade configurations and a lot of looking at all of the schools other than the Jenkins School, which was new and big, newer, it's 20 years old now. So I think, I think a lot of this work is kind of out there, if people want to go online and find some of the studies that have been done, so we're, it's not and find some of the studies that have been done, so we're, it's not like we're starting from scratch here.
Right, and all those numbers will be reviewed, updated, and done all over again.
Right. Any other questions? Not on this, no. Thank you for coming in.
Thank you all, thank you.
Good luck with the first day of schools coming up, yes?
Thank you.
With masks, I'm hearing?
Return.
It sounds like the state might bail us all out. All right. The next item was the capital improvement plan.
I don't know if there's anything on here that you would not want to see on here. The water mains were added, it isn't a specific project, it's just that there are no water main funds currently available. The two and the three million that was approved are both out on contracts, so they don't have any available funds currently to start design for another phase, other than the Hummer Rock phase, which they're working on. They don't have any money to do a major repair. So, the board has been making recommendations to look at this in the fall as well as in the spring, so that could come out and just go into the spring and be part of the regular capital plan. But I listed it just so the board could take under advisement and see what they want to do.
We like to have money available if something comes up. We will be having a discussion at some point, if the county ever gets going and gives us guidance on the new OPERA funds as to what projects we would use those for. And it would be good, if we're going to do a water project, if the OPERA funds didn't cover it, that we would have some available to make up the difference. You know, one of those projects could be the Hummer Rock water mains, which we're designing, we don't know what that's going to cost. Could be Oceanside INI, which is sewer work, we could use it towards the water treatment plant, that will actually meet our timelines as we go forward. So, right now, we're really just waiting for Plymouth County to tell us what they're taking for a vig out of our money. If you tell them it's our money, I don't know why they have to handle it. The state's just passing the money through to those communities that don't have a county, and our county somehow has to handle it, which, that's not getting upset. But, once they tell us what they're taking for their handling of our funds, we'll know how much we have, and then we can have a conversation as to what we're going to use it for.
We just don't need to be vetted by capital planning, so if the board decides to leave them on, then I will be sending something out to Chris Carter and asking them to start meeting to discuss these projects, and then they can make their recommendation to you.
And the question of the old landfill site assessment, that was the result of some neighbors being concerned about an old landfill that had been closed, what, 25, 30 years ago?
So, this is the Stockbridge Road landfill. Some residents had brought some concerns to the Department of Environmental Protection, when the Department of Environmental Protection went and pulled the folder on the Stockbridge landfill, which was closed in the '70s, the file for the closing of the landfill is incomplete. So, we need to do some additional testing, some additional monitoring of that landfill. We've put together the numbers, and this is what we need to do, to put in some new test wells, and do some stuff out there to comply with what DEP wants. Plus, to put that to bed and officially close that landfill, so, yeah.
Ms. Canfield?
Just two quick questions. On that, I think, Madam Chair, it pleases the board at some point, sooner rather than later, an update specifically on that would be really useful. If we're spending this kind of money on that, you know, it obviously needs to be put in here. And the other question I had is, if we save $3 million for water mains, does that limit, do we do INI, sewer INI, and do we need to have this as a line that's more general, so that you have flexibility?
Two separate funds.
You're talking about our funds?
I'm talking about, we have the OPERA funds, but this is just for water mains. If you want money for sewer, it's a separate fund.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, but OPERA can be used for water, our sewer infrastructure.
I misunderstood.
Oh, that's good.
Water, sewer, broadband, and premium pay, I think, because of those, the-
For our purposes, water, sewer, broadband.
So, I'm on there.
Thank you, sorry, I misunderstood that.
Well, that's a good explanation. Any more questions on that article? Community preservation?
Teacher, I gave you the listing of the applications before the CPC. They're holding their hearings, they requested that they would be the last ones to appear before, everybody, so that they can hold their votes. So far, they've only voted one project, which is the $8,000 for the Bailey Ellis House restoration, so all of these could call off, all of these could come forward. It just depends on their hearing schedule.
Well, some of them might be able to be put off until the spring, but they've got the applications, so.
All the applications are online, so the board's welcome to go and view the applications online.
Any questions, board? Nope?
No.
Article seven, local option acceptance, deferral of water charges.
These seven and eight are just a continuation of the property tax relief for those residents who need it the most. This was brought forward by the acceptors.
All right. Article nine, enforcement, endorsement of master plan. Questions? No questions about that one? Article 10, these are the, and 11 are the petitioner articles, and they're both related to marijuana, special legislation for marijuana establishments and municipal marijuana distributor, dispensaries and establishments. We can't do anything about these.
They're on.
So-
The petition, they're on. I know Mara had asked for a red-line version, Karen is, I don't think she's finished it yet, but we'll have a red-line version. Basically, what they do is, they would allow recreational marijuana facilities in any place that we currently allow medical marijuana facilities. So, that's most of our business districts, but there are restrictions. So, 500 feet of a daycare, of a playground, so some of the places you think, "Oh, that'd be a good spot," there's playground across the street, or there's, but the Harbor District would almost be completely available for something like this. Most of North Situate would be available for this. You have the playground in North Situate, but pretty much everything on the other side of the tracks would be without, outside the 500 feet. Green Bush, the Ovaly District and Green Bush would be eligible. There is a daycare in that area, so you've got to draw the circle around that. But, it's really whether or not the town wants to allow recreational marijuana. That's really the basic question.
Is there per capita number of licenses you can, like every, can only have one for every 10,000?
I'd have to go back and look.
It's related to the number of liquor licenses somehow.
It's somehow tied to that. I'm not sure what the need for the special legislation is, but I haven't talked to the petitioners.
I figured there must be some sort of-
They have to go to the planning board, but I don't see Situate, if we had one, Marshfield has one now, there's two in Rockland, so, just from a business standpoint, having more than one in Situate.
I think when this was on the ballot four years ago, or when it originally came up and we prohibited, if I'm recalling correctly, it was tied to the liquor licenses, and then we were qualified for, I want to say, 1.2. I don't know if you can round up or not. So, you know, that, based on that statute, that's my recollection.
The town prohibited at the town meeting, I want to say, the fall of '97. It was after I was hired, but before I started, I was at the town meeting.
Oh, so.
Two, 2017.
2017, 2017.
Yeah.
But there isn't, so the town took, made a choice at that time to not allow this, and I think a lot of it was, hadn't been done before, what would it look like? Now it's here, it's open, it is being done in other communities. I don't know of any of the communities around here that have had issues with it. I did actually go look at one of the ones in Rockland, because I just wanted to see what it looked like. They're really very nice buildings, and very controlled inside, but it's really going to be a decision for the town whether or not they want to allow it.
Any other questions? All right, I think we do need to vote this.
We do.
Do we have a motion?
Yep. Move that the select board include the 11 articles presented in the draft warrant for the October 26, 2021 special town meeting, subject to any further corrections, and are edits by town council and/or the town administrator.
Second, second by Ms. Canfield, all in favor?
Hi.
Motion carries 4-0. Thank you very much. Jim and Nancy?
Thanks, Nancy.
And Mr. Burkett?
Thank you.
Thank you. So, moving on to old business, I know we're scheduled.
We're allowed to do old business, yes?
Yep, there's no time限制, we can go right and do these, don't keep coming along.
Okay, so, next on the agenda is discussed vote request for four sewer connections. 626 Chief Justice Cushing Highway, Paul Maribito, President, Ross Engineering. Mr. Maribito, welcome back.
Thank you, Andrew. Thank you. At the last meeting, it was decided that there were, one thing for me to do was to, I'll write a letter, and I did, I'll write it to Karen and the members of the board, explaining the pros for having those three homes on sewer. The other issue was, the town administrator's going to approach the town council for some opinions, which he did do, so I'll let him respond to that, but I think my letter speaks for itself, for obvious reasons, so with that, I'll defer to Jim.
So, I'm actually glad the superintendent's here, because that's part of what would happen to occur. So, there were two questions. One, if we wanted to connect them into the sewer, and Bill, what this is, is the property right out in front of the high school on Chief Justice Cushing Highway that's for sale, they would like to connect, if we could just turn that so the superintendent can get a look at that, Paul? Just turn that. They would like to connect those into sewerage, into the sewer line on the high school property.
There's a sewer in that hole, there's a sewer around here, we're going to extend it, but we do a block, and these halls, we're going to run it, we're going to give it this time here, and then we'll, and so it's like, you know.
So, there are two options, both of which have different codicils that go with them. The first option is, if they bring their line over and want to connect it into the sewer, that would require an easement, which would require a town meeting vote. If the decision was to extend the sewer line at the expense of the applicant to the property line, that can be done. It would have to be done, obviously, at prevailing wage and everything else that we have to deal with. However, a question would then have to be put to the DEP to make a determination as to whether or not this is considered an expansion of the sewer system. Now, we weren't going to put that to DEP without the board making a decision one way or the other, but that is something that would have to go to DEP. I asked Kevin just to be here, so he could explain what the ramifications of that are, but this could be determined to be an expansion of the sewer system, which would require a vote of approval from the Department of Environmental Protection. And then, once all those were in place, the applicant would still have to go to the superintendent and/or the school committee, because the work would be done, obviously, on school grounds, and we'd have to make sure that nothing that was done there would interfere with the education or the availability of access to the schools, to the fields, or anything like that. So, yes, we can make the connection, those are the two ways to do it, but really, the decision for the board is whether or not you want to allow it. As Will said, he cannot approve this, this is not something that they can approve. And again, Kevin, I asked Kevin to come, he's been sitting patiently, so I could have questions, I want Kevin's opinion, he's always happy to give his opinion.
Ms. Canfield, I see you looking at me. Do you have a question? An observation?
I just am curious that, is, what's the trigger that it knows to be, because we have done, if there's a sewer main, and we're entitled to hook up, we've approved that without having to do that.
But that's hooking up a connection to the sewer, to the existing sewer line. That would be an extension of an existing sewer line, there's a difference. Okay, the sewer line's here, I'm connecting into it, I'm taking the sewer line from here, and I'm moving it over to there.
And spaghetti lines that have been done-
This can't be, again, those are services that are connecting in, it's not an extension of that system.
First answer to that.
And again, Kevin's here, he's the expert. Is that accurate, Kev?
Yeah, and one of the things is, well, I'm sorry I wasn't here at the last meeting, but it didn't meet the requirements. Even the sewer on that road is technically, it's a sewer, a school sewer, it's not necessarily an open municipal sewer, so he couldn't approve it under those guidelines. It says in the bylaws that you have to, you know, get approved from the select board as well as the DEP. Someone to, what was done, it was a slant ranch, that was a much bigger project, I don't know if anybody, whoever does everything that went through for that particular project, but that was a much larger project, and it's a big undertaking, a couple of years in term. So, that's, if I can answer any questions that you have on that, or do you just have me on, I can follow up with any answers?
Well, I have a clarification. Has the property been sold?
Yes, yes, it has.
It's been sold?
Yes.
So, the person applying for this permit, whatever we want to call it-
Is the applicant.
Is the owner?
Yes, that's correct.
Yeah, I mean, my question was about septic, and Amy answered that. It is, you know, it's near that resource, but honestly, I just think, you know, there's one house there today, and we're sitting here trying to shove four into a lot, disrupt the road, connect into a sewer, I, you know, I'm not inclined to approve it, honestly. I think it's overkill for that site, and I think you're trying to squeeze a lot of things into an area, which, obviously, if it worked, you wouldn't have to be here asking for all of these accommodations, so I, I'm inclined just not to support a sewer connection for those reasons, Paul, so.
Yeah, just for the record, we have done soil testing out there.
I'm sorry?
I said, we have done some soil testing out there, and we do know that the soils would be suitable for an onsite septic system, so.
But I believe, and I won't put words in Paul's mouth, but I believe he testified at the last meeting that you can do septic there. It will be unsightly, it will be large mounded systems, but, again, correct me if I'm wrong, Paul, it is possible-
That's what I thought.
-to do septic there.
Yep.
So, at the last meeting, I was inclined to approve this, simply because I was very fearful of septic failing, and that hurting our water supply. However, the more I hear about this DDP and the regulations, and kind of the rigmarole that we're going to have to go through, it's going to, it just seems so, so many things that could go wrong and could screw us up, and we could be focused on so many other types of areas. It just, it doesn't pass the smell test. I don't know why, it just doesn't feel-
Sorry.
Not to be funny.
A pun.
Pun not intended.
I know, that's what makes it funny.
Just took you out of figure, yeah.
Yeah.
You know, Chair, could I make a few comments, and you respond to Andrew's comments? As far as the permits that Jim laid out, that's something that we do, I mean, that's something that we would take, and we would pursue all the permits necessary, so there'd be no cost to the town to do that, but the other thing I should point out, and this is just for information, anyone that has a septic system, there's a form called Disposal Works Construction Permit, that's issued by the Board of Health. It's a standard form that's used in all the towns. Once a septic system is installed, a certificate of compliance has to be issued by the Board of Health, and that's only done after the system has been inspected throughout the construction, and the haz built, has been approved by the Board of Health. But if you read the bottom line of that form, what it says is that there's no guarantee the septic system is going to function properly. You know, in other words, there's no guarantees that septic systems, even if they're installed properly, are going to function the way they should, and there's many reasons for that. That's why I stated in my letter the benefits of tying these homes to the sewer, and I did mention in the letter that there's no guarantee the system would ever function a long-term the way it's supposed to. Also, given the fact, it isn't just a stream, there's some wetlands out there. That whole property is eight and a half acres, and the homes have been placed to the right side of it. The remaining land is going to stay vacant for obvious reasons, so. I just wanted to make those comments.
Yeah, so I just wanted to get- So I just want to get some clarification on what you said. So you're saying that as an engineer, you think that there's a chance and a high probability that if you did do septic, that it will fail? And you would do that to the town?
What I'm saying is, there's.
You would build something like that and then knowing that it would fail?
I mean, we never had a septic system fail that we've designed, but what I'm saying is, no one can guarantee that something won't happen long-term. I've seen some systems fail after a year. And the reason for that is, some people put garbage disposals on them, or they put other things into their septic system that they shouldn't, and that causes a pretty quick failure, but.
And so you feel comfortable going forward with septic, that you would still do this project, knowing it's next to a school?
If we have to do septic.
And so you'll do it anyway, even though?
Right. If we can't tie in the sewer, then we'll be doing the septic. I mean, tying the sewer is a far better solution, for obvious reasons, but if the selectmen choose not to grant approval to do that, then the systems will be on septic. We did the system next door for the habitat house. That was a mounded system as well.
Yeah. I'm just trying, the fact that you would say, hey, I'm going to do this, but hey, it could fail next to a school and wetlands, just, it's interesting.
Well, to me, that speaks to, not every property should be developed or developed to the extent that this apparently is being contemplated. So I agree with Maura. I'm not inclined to approve this. I think we're setting a precedent here that we shouldn't. And if septic, if septic systems are installed, if that's what you want to do, as long as it's, you know, the Conservation Commission, it's within the buffers. There are a lot of people waiting for sewer in this town, so I'm not inclined. And I will say, my colleague, Mr. Vagnani, feels differently, and he asked me to express that to the, to people, that he's concerned about taking money in through sewer connections to help the sewer enterprise fund. So that's what Tony thinks.
We heard it.
He knows I disagree. So, Ms. Canfield?
Yeah, I thank you for providing us with the information that you did. I mean, the board wanted to know how big these were. What's contemplated are two, 3,000 square foot homes and then a nearly 3,000 square foot duplex, which was something I particularly wanted to know, how big these structures were going to be. That has nothing to do, really, with the application, but I think it's important for the superintendent just to be aware, you know, that's going to be a budding, the school property and what that will impact. I, and we were provided with a lot of detail on the wetlands and the conditions of that property, which, and Mr. Goodrich and I are both very concerned about, you know, exactly what you say. So if something goes wrong, how does that impact literally downstream? So we provided that. But I agree with my colleagues that, you know, if it's an extension of our sewer service for new construction, we have many, many homes waiting in line, and I just think it would be a disservice to some, if we could add a pipe and add another street of existing homes, that we would be not doing our, we would not be fulfilling our responsibility for existing residents. I have a great deal of confidence in both Board of Health review of properly engineered septic systems and our planning board, because there's going to be a long road ahead of anybody to make sure that this is vetted properly. This is just the start of the process. You know, obviously, something will go there, and I think Mr. Vagnani said last meeting was, however we decide, there will be construction at some point in the head. But I have a lot of faith in our boards that will have to review it, but I, my concerns have been addressed, and I agree, I can't see supporting putting it onto the, to the school sewer line.
So, do we need to take a vote?
We should. The board should have a vote to approve four sanitary sewer connections for 426 Chief Justice Cushing Highway or to deny the application for four sanitary sewer connections for 426.
Someone like to make a motion?
626, sorry.
It's 626, right?
626, yeah.
I make a motion to deny the sewer connection request for 626 Chief Justice Cushing Highway as presented.
Second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Canfield. All in favor of the denial?
Aye.
Four zero, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
Next, under Old Business, we discuss the auction of the mine at Fire Station. A hot topic, yes.
Yes, in the order. I would like to recuse myself of this discussion.
Because you're in that vicinity?
Well, I may have a family member that may wish to participate.
All right.
So I'm just going to.
What's happening? Should we leave?
Because she may have a family member who may be interested in the auction of the mine at Fire Station.
Oh. I thought we were on financial policies. Okay.
Yeah, potatoes, potatoes.
Wait a minute.
No, you're right. No, 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 I'm wrong.
I'm usually skipping ahead.
It's me, I'm wrong.
Okay. So, this is just a discussion. I know that the last time you were here, we were, boy, fix that door, would you?
They're just angry leaving the meeting, I don't even tell you. So at the last meeting, where we discussed the auction of the mine at Fire Station, the board had wanted us to establish a minimum base for the bid. Nancy's had discussions with our auctioneer company. It is their opinion that putting a minimum bid drives down the number of bidders and ultimately drives down what you will get for the property. So they believe it is not in our interest to have a minimum bid for the station. We came back then to ask for you to concur in that. If you do not require the minimum bid, then we can have this go live within a day or two. We've had a lot of interest in it. It went up inadvertently by the company immediately the next day before we had a chance to call and say we want to put a minimum bid on it. How many inquiries did they get?
1,368 Facebook views and 230 Instagram views.
So we received several calls in the office about the property, what can go there, what cannot go there. Just for the board, in a nutshell, it's a non-conforming lot, so almost anything you would do there is going to require a Section 6 finding from the Zoning Board of Appeals. Whether or not it's required in the flood plains, I haven't looked at that, but at a minimum, it's not conforming because of frontage, it's not conforming because of the distance from the building to the street, and it's not conforming due to lot size.
Is that all included in the auction information?
Yeah.
And it is a, it is zone residential. So there was some questions, could someone put a business in there? Could someone use it for their landscaping business? And it is a residential zone, so.
But it would be a buyer beware situation, right? We're not going to let them say, bid on it, and then say, well, if I can't get what I want from the Zoning Board of Appeals, I'm not going through with it.
Yeah, there's no contingent, sale. You buy it and you do what you want.
And their website is very clear about how, if you're interested in buying at auction, the steps you should take, you know, including how to get your financing, how to register for the auction, but, you know, go do your due diligence. Go inspect the property. Go, you know, find out about the zoning. Do all of the things if you're going to spend good money on that piece of property.
And it encourages them to keep bidding.
You can do something. There's no question, you can do something with that property in terms of residential use.
A tiny house?
It really is going to depend on what you want to do and how you want to do it. You could do something absolutely within the footprint of the building.
Could be the new, what's that?
How much you can go beyond that, again, is, you know, our questions. As a general rule, on a non-conforming lot, you can't do anything that increases the non-conformity of the lot. So they can't go any closer to the street. That makes it more non-conforming. Can they go to the side? Yes. Can they go back? I don't know. I don't know where the wetland line is and stuff like that. So there's a lot of due diligence, but you definitely can do something with the site. No question.
Questions?
No, I mean, I trust the auctioneer. If that's his recommendation, who am I to, you know, question that? I'm not an auctioneer. It's his business.
He's only had one auction in recent history that put a reserve on it. He felt that they did poorly. He's like, and they can't tell because they didn't know what would have happened. But his point was, it's all about the bidder pool. You want as many bidders as possible because you have the low rungs, so you want the people who think they're going to get a deal to start it. And then you get the middle rung people who'll start moving it up, and the people who are really interested have to bid higher to get there. And that's what we want. We want the maximum return so that we have the pay down on the senior center. So there's nothing for you to vote on. It was, I did say we would come back to the board and let them know, and we could discuss these items.
No, I trust, they know what they're doing, so.
We've been trying to get rid of that for like 30 years.
So it's on.
The gap will eventually fall on poor old mine at Fire Station.
We'll check at least one thing off my list.
I know.
Your list is still this long, though.
Sure is.
Hey, let's talk that fast.
So, this is everyone's favorite topic.
Get Ms. Canfield.
Well, we need to get Mrs. Canfield back.
I'll get her.
We don't want to miss financial policies.
How many times have we been down this road?
This is time number six.
Yes, that's what I thought. And I remember the times when we said, not tonight.
I tend to get tabled, but that's okay. It's kind of like a blind date, every blind date I've ever been on.
Nancy, this is only a review.
It's only a review. There's no discussion, there's no vote. We're just reviewing the fact that we haven't reviewed the financial policies, and we might want to get back to those so that we can, where we have some big projects on the horizon. So I gave you the most recent version, which was version eight, and I also, as the chair had requested for the retreat, put some notes on the proposed financial policy, so you have those notes as well, which is kind of like the Cliff Notes, so I would read the notes on the proposed financial policies before you delve back into the joy of the financial policies, because there are things you may not want to do, things you may want to do, and other things we can look at. And I also gave you an OPEB funding analysis so you could see where we were in relation to others, because there is specific language in there about how to fund OPEB, which you may or may not like and may wish to change. That was the update on financial policies.
So, that's it? I actually had a very concrete question.
Sure.
Let's, let's play what if. What if these policies had been in place? All of them, as written? Would our conversation about the OPEB contribution, the discussion and the disagreement between the advisory committee and the Board of Selectment, the Select Board, would we have even had that conversation?
Potentially, because we are still woefully underfunded for OPEB. So it, where we had an actual policy that was greater than what we've been doing in the past, it might not have come up because we might not have brought it forward to put more in. But I think it would head off future conversations of the like. If we had, especially the current proposal that's in there, can be aggressive. So I figured I'll throw aggressive in there, and then we can back away from aggressive.
Well, I guess, so that's my question. If, if we adopt an aggressive policy.
Who will have a beef with you?
Well.
I do not, I think that would resolve the advisory committee's concerns that we are not dedicating enough funds towards this liability. Whether or not we could go to the potential level that's in there, some of the things that I proposed in there were that the enterprise funds could fund their portion of the OPEB liability.
Okay.
Because they're not funding pension liability right now.
Right.
So, I mean, they get a little bit in the indirects, but we're talking a really little bit. So they could actually break it up over 10 years, and we could start making some real headway on it. And we actually have our biennial actuarial analysis broken out by town, school, and five enterprise. So we know exactly what their liability is based on the employees and retirees of those particular enterprises. So that's something to think about. That's one way to be a little bit more aggressive. And we do currently collect funds in the indirects for the OPEB cost. It's small dollars.
I was going to say, it's small, right?
But, you know, we do credit those, so I give them the schedule, the actuary, so that those funds get credit for the assets that they've contributed towards. So again, there's a lot of different ways to carve up this particular cantaloupe. I don't know why I'm saying that, but can't record me tonight. It's different. And every town was different, and that was the other reason that I gave you the OPEB analysis, funding analysis, because no one's doing it the same way.
Right.
Everyone's found their way to attack it. So nothing that we do is wrong. Anything that we do to improve what we're currently doing for our funding level is just better for us, because we can get more money in the bank, get more return on our investments, so we have to put less funds aside.
Questions?
And we will know our OPEB liability again in probably a month, because that's out to the actuary right now.
It just gets bigger and bigger and bigger.
It's at 129 million, so I'm guessing we're going to top 130. It's a number.
Ms. Canfield, she's dying to ask.
Well, I'll get back to you in a second, but I missed the beginning of your comments. So to the pages of, thank you so much for providing what you provided. It just, it really made it easy to take real bites of trying to understand them.
Stella Moore, I'm all over it for you.
So we're not, we're just, we're not going into the weeds, so I can just put this whole page.
Yeah. We're not going to take you into the weeds, especially where you don't have a full complement, but just to start the discussion again.
Yes.
And see individually what you have, areas that you want us to focus on or get more research on. There, like, even in the proposed notes that sent to you, some of the ways that we would evaluate, like, whether a percentage of fund balance, percentage of net operating revenues, what do you like? You know, sometimes when you say it's a percentage of net operating revenues, people are like, what's a net, what's a net? Can you just put it in English?
Well, you did, and you did a great job of it, because I, before, when we were looking at it, I did not have pages and pages of notes. Now I'm like, okay, now I understand what you started it.
So we borrowed somebody else. The rating agency gave us an example of someone else's financial policies that they find to be excellent.
Who did?
The rating agency.
Was it Wakefield?
It's Wakefield.
Yeah.
So this works for Wakefield. We, you know, we've moved it around towards us, but it may not, it's not going to work for us. I mean, the debt limits alone will not work for our water and sewer enterprise funds. It's just, there's no way. We're heavy in debt on those funds because we're making a major investment in infrastructure. So we have to decide what works for us and then put it in our policies and follow it.
And then my only specific follow-up on the OPEB, and it has to do with the rating agencies, is, you know, everybody's doing different things. Is there, have they shown a preference for percent funded? Like, at what point is the tipping point not in our favor?
They're looking for an actual commitment and something that's consistent. So is it in your policies? Do you follow your policies? If you're not, why? I mean, everyone's saying, basically saying the same thing. Once I finish with the pension liability, I'll move on to the OPEB liability. That's great. You still have two massive liabilities on your financial statements, and you're showing us that you're not going to do anything about it? That doesn't show the physical management? But if you're saying, okay, I recognize this, I have all these other things, and I'm following my financial policies, or I've been added to them. So a lot of communities adopted meals tax and directed meals tax towards it. We adopted room occupancy. We haven't dedicated that to anything. Maybe we want to move that towards it. Maybe we want to do something else with the enterprise funds. So lots of different ways to go about it, to show an additional commitment to it, but also to codify that commitment.
Would the board like this to be a topic at the retreat?
It's a great idea.
All right. So.
And for fun and exciting.
Consider yourself invited to our Saturday morning. Poor Nancy.
I think all the retreats has gone up two hours. Great.
We got to be done in time for the morning.
I'm doing pretty well.
Yes, but I have all the candy and I have all.
I'm in this group alone.
Yeah, so it could be a fun retreat.
Because I also want this board to actually discuss the master plan and where it fits into our various initiatives and capital budget and, and, and. So I think the two main topics will be this and the master plan.
And in a coming attraction for a future meeting, I talked to the town administrator about it. We were thinking in September, depending on what the chair wanted to do, would be another debt overview. So before we did the senior project, the senior center project, the campus project, we did a whole look at what's our debt, where is it, where does that fall? That's, it's been two years, almost. So it's time to have that discussion again. So I'm going to put together one of those fun and exciting debt presentations that you all love, that we can turn off the lights.
Because we have two potentially huge projects coming.
Yes, and completely different potential funding mechanisms. One's coming from an enterprise fund, one's general fund tax levy, but the enterprise But the enterprise fund one could also be general fund tax levy. So there's a lot to talk about and knowing where we stand would be good. And it's also just nice to have those discussions so people in the town know the level of debt we're at, how we're retiring it, and how we're spending it.
Well, even to get the fees, oh, sorry.
It's all right, go ahead.
I was gonna say, even just to get the feasibility study passed, those questions are gonna come up. So we should be prepared for a special town meeting.
Well, I can get that put together for your next meeting if you want, the first one in September.
That's good. Thank you, Nancy.
You're welcome. I think I'm still up, so I can stay if you want.
Is there more you can say?
Well, I think at the next, I'm under, we flow right into new business and I'm under new business as well.
Oh, there you go.
It's a fun and exciting night.
Budget calendar. Love budget.
So because it's so much fun to be in three fiscal years, I thought it would be good to start the fiscal twenty-three budget calendar. So we just closed fiscal twenty-one over the weekend. And that's off to the Department of Revenue. We're in fiscal twenty-two.
And that's because of COVID, yes?
Yeah.
Or just, this is just our regular. All right.
The squirrel's on the wheel, the hamster's on the wheel.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for that visual.
All of our visuals today. So it's time for the fiscal twenty-three budget schedule to actually start if we're going to meet all of our general bylaw and charter review deadlines. And hopefully some of those will get changed. The first one that we hit is the capital planning committee one. And that needs to be, I think, five months in advance of town meeting. They need to have the plan, which means we have to start two months prior to that. So before you, you have the budget and capital review, capital plan review timetable. And it starts tonight if the board decides on voting that calendar. And the next thing would be next week for the capital budget forms and directions to be distributed to departments. And off we go with fiscal twenty-three. And then you have a draft hearing schedule also. The advisory committee has already voted that they will be holding all of their meetings by Zoom. So they're set to go. And then if the board votes that, I will release this calendar to their chair as well, as well as the capital planning chair, so they can start to make their schedules mentally.
They're meeting only by Zoom? Wow.
Advisory committee is only conducting their meetings by Zoom.
But when does that end? Isn't there a date on that?
It runs through April twenty-twenty-two.
Okay.
So they voted two meetings ago to continue on Zoom.
Okay.
Capital planning does not have dates because they...
Capital planning last year chose to go their own direction for setting their, their meeting schedule. So they didn't, didn't want to be regimented to a schedule necessarily. So I can talk to Chris this year to see if he can flesh it out a little bit more. My guess will be it'll remain to be decided.
Has the moderator appointed anybody to the capital planning committee? How is, what is that committee looking like right now?
They have a form, so they can hold meetings.
Do they have any new members?
Not that I'm aware of, no.
I'll talk to Jim.
Yeah, we gotta get that done.
I'll talk to Jim.
And if we know anybody, I mean, it's a nice committee to be on. So sir, if you want to change your, your level of interest, it's a great committee to be on to really help impact, you know, capital projects in town and...
You get to take great tours.
Tours. You get tours of the sewer treatment plant, the water treatment plant.
See all the new equipment?
It's great.
All the old equipment?
Drive the trucks.
You know, and that kind of, have we put out that there are openings on capital planning? I mean, I know the moderator up points.
That's the moderator.
I understand that, but have we put out saying that there are openings so the moderator can at least?
We don't know what the moderator, who he's meeting with or discussing it with him, so there might, may or may not be one.
Okay. I promise, I'll talk to him. And we'll get some agreement as to getting people on there.
Yeah, that'd be good, yeah.
Just, if I could interject just for one thing. Totally, just a little asterisk here. And when we present the, when the charter review committee comes before the board to present their recommendations, one of the things that has been discussed at great length is the transparency of the moderators' appointments and the ability to solicit involvement. And so that will be, that's a little coming attractions head up because that was definitely identified by the committee of, you know, how do we make sure that, I mean, we do such a thorough job when we appoint people.
Right.
And that might be beneficial if the moderator were required to do as much.
Well, that's a charter change, right?
That's right. So we'll get to that in coming attractions.
Good point. But for the time being, I will talk to Jim.
Absolutely.
Okay. Not that we're clearing that.
We're a long way before that conversation.
Anybody, any comments on the...
I just, I had one question, just process-wise for, I don't know, for all of the assembled bodies, is when we do start doing the department review of the budgets and we get to those, to those parts of our plan, is it, do the support think it might be useful to provide sort of standard direction to each department ahead of what we expect them to present and we get thorough backup? I'm just noting that in past years, we've had some department heads who come in with twenty fly PowerPoint and others who go, who come in and say, "Have any questions?" So I'm wondering if, you know, for the sake of consistency and also just so that the department heads know what their expectations are, is that something we want to even attempt?
Well, I, this is my personal opinion. I think that's Jim's job.
Okay, Jim.
I mean, I don't think you want the beautification committee to come in with sixty slides.
Exactly.
But you might want that from the DPW with a budget like it. And so it really, I mean, we can, I tell them to just hit the high points. Hit the high points when you come in. The board has all the backup if they have any questions. But unless it's a brand-new board and no one's been through this before, I do assume that the board has knowledge and understanding. So we try not to get too much into the nitty-gritty and drag down, you know, the board meetings into hours-long budget debates and budget discussions. So we can give it whatever format you want. But for the most part, some of the small boards, committees, and commissions, you know, this is just their time to come in and say, "Hi, we're here. You know, we have money, we want to do things, and this is what we're doing."
My only comment on the schedule is that doing the schools and the community preservation review on the same night, those, that could potentially be a lot, right? Depending upon what CPC has, schools is usually pretty long.
And the problem is they both need to be at the end.
I know, they do. That's all right. You only have three of that, that's fine. I see capital plans, the two fifteen, so, okay.
How many questions you gonna have on the school budget?
Forty million dollars, no problem. Next.
That's what Tom would be doing.
I know, we know.
And winter could play havoc with that whole schedule anyways.
Well, you know, I would like to suggest that the community preservation committee, they could, if they wanted to, approve projects on a rolling basis. They wouldn't have to necessarily vote them all at the very last minute. So, you know, maybe we should talk to Dan. I know you're the liaison now.
Yeah.
And I'd be glad to join the conversation. But, you know, is there a way of improving how, or not improving, but making it a little less deadline-oriented? Because they're, they've really been taking applications on a year-round basis now. So maybe work that conversation. Because I agree with you, it's, that's a lot in one night. Any other, do I hear a motion to approve?
Do we need to vote for it?
Yes.
Please.
Move to approve the FY twenty-three budget meeting calendar schedule?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Mr. Goodrich, all in favor?
Aye.
Four zero, motion carries.
Thank you. I'll distribute that to all the department heads tomorrow morning and get the necessary groans by email back.
Oh, yeah, they'd love to see you coming.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. You're no dummy. Thanks, Nancy. So we have discussed vote, one-day wine and malt licenses. If someone like to make a motion?
Would you like three at once?
Yes, please.
All right. As we have all of the necessary backup for all of these applications, I will move that the Board of Selectment approve one-day wine and malt licenses to St. Mary, to St. Mary's National Pavilion Center, One Penn Street, for a private event on August twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-one, from six p.m. to ten p.m. And move a license, a one-day wine and malt license for Joe Norton for a private event at Mullane's Fish Market at Eight Allen Place on September fourth, twenty-twenty-one, from seven to eleven p.m. And move a one-day wine and malt license to Joe Norton for a private event at Mullane's Fish Market, Eight Allen Place on September twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-one, from seven until eleven p.m.
Second. Second by Ms. Curran. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Four zero, motion carries. I guess I can't read and speak at the same time. Onto our next item. Discuss, vote, board and committee appointments and renewals. Yes. What would we do without you?
A lot of moving parts.
Seems like a hard job.
I put all the renewals first.
Yep.
Should we do number eleven since someone's here first?
Yes. Let's do that. Release the poor man.
I move to appoint Josh Sigsworth to the Commission on Disabilities for a term of three years or until successor is named and completion of the Conflict of Interest Law Online Training Program is completed within thirty days.
Second.
Second by Mr. Goodrich, all in favor?
Aye.
Five, four zero, motion carries. Congratulations. Welcome to the fold.
They will be, yeah.
Thank you.
It's one of the more engaging committees.
So would we like to do the reappointments?
Sure, I can start.
The clerk could read off.
Move to reappoint Dave Mary to the Recreation Commission for a term of three years or until a successor is named and completion of the Conflict of Interest Law Online Training Program is completed within thirty days.
Do we want to, can we do them all at once? Or do we have to do them individually? Okay. Yep, second, second by Ms. Canfield. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Four zero, motion carries.
Move to appoint Stefania Gallo, Coastal Midland Officer, as a standing member of the Coastal Advisory Commission until a successor is named and completion of the Conflict of Interest Law Online Training Program is completed within thirty days.
Second.
Second by Ms. Curran, all in favor?
Aye.
Four zero, motion carries.
Move to appoint John Murphy, Emergency Responder to the Coastal Advisory Commission for a term of one year or until a successor is named and completion of the Conflict of Interest Law Online Training Program is completed within thirty days.
Second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Curran, all in favor?
Aye.
Four zero, motion carries.
Apologize if I say this woman's last name incorrectly, but move to reappoint Kevin Cafferty, DPW, Frank Snow, Conservation, Jill.
Lamore.
Lamore. Resident Coastal, James Cannavan, resident Coastal, Stephen Tripp, resident inland, to the Coastal Advisory Commission for a term of one year or until a successor is named and completion of the Conflict of Interest Law Online Training Program is completed within thirty days.
Second.
Second by Ms. Curran, all in favor?
Aye.
Four zero, motion carries.
Move to reappoint Frank Snow, Douglas Aborg, and Richard Harding to the Conservation Commission for a term of three years or until a successor is named and completion of the Conflict of Interest Law Online Training Program is completed within thirty days.
Second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Canfield, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Four zero, motion carries.
Move to reappoint Linda Hayes and John Miller to the Public Building Commission as senior center user members for a term of three years or until a successor is named and completion of the Conflict of Interest Law Online Training Program is completed within thirty days.
Second?
Discussion?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Point of order, or, point of order first.
I, I thought JD was resigning from the, didn't he say he was done from the senior center board? He renewed? Okay. Okay. That was my, I didn't think he was continuing. All right. Karen, what was your question?
My question was, does it have to be a three-year term? Are we gonna need them as user members for three years? Or do they just go fade away as the need declines?
They fade away pretty much as they need to. But they're a three-year term.
Okay.
If, if they require less, then they resign.
And there are no other openings on the, these are just the liaisons from?
These are just the liaison, user members.
The user members, okay, got it. Okay.
They're not done yet.
I will second, second by Ms. Curran, all in favor?
Aye.
Four zero, motion carries.
Move to reappoint Claudia Oliver to the Widows Walk Committee for a term of one year or until a successor is named and completion of the Conflict of Interest Law Online Training Program is completed within thirty days.
Second by Ms. Canfield, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Four zero, is that right?
A five, sorry.
Okay. Four zero, motion carries. I'm starting to sound rote here.
Move to reappoint Marla Minier and Andreas Vitor, right?
Vitor.
Vitor, excuse me, to the Charter Review Committee for a term of three years or until a successor is named and completion of the Conflict of Interest Law Online Training Program is completed within thirty days.
Second.
Second by Ms. Canfield, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries, four zero.
Move to reappoint Doug Smith to the Historic Commission for a term of two years or until a successor is named and completion of the Conflict of Interest Law Online Training Program is completed within thirty days.
Second, second by Ms. Curran, all in favor?
Aye.
Four zero, motion carries.
Move to reappoint Stephen Letchfield to the Historic Commission for a term of three years or until a successor is named and completion of the Conflict of Interest Law Online Training Program is completed within thirty days.
Second. Second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Canfield, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Four zero, motion carries.
I'll move to appoint Susan Casey to the Beautification Commission for a term of three years or until a successor is named and completion of the Conflict of Interest Law Online Training Program is completed within thirty days.
Second by Ms. Canfield, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Four zero, motion carries.
Move to appoint Susan Berdin Dower, that's a, yeah, to the Animal Control Board for a term of three years or until a successor is named and completion of the Conflict of Interest Law Online Training Program is completed within thirty days.
Second?
Discussion?
Discussion, okay.
Does that remove Jim or Kevin? Because they temporarily went on. How does?
No, we still have full confirmation.
You don't? Okay, that was just my question. Thank you.
Second.
Second by Ms. Canfield, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, four zero. And finally, Fran. It's been a noisy night.
Move to appoint Fran Mc, right, Fran McMillan.
He didn't come, so.
No, we'll wait till, wait till my colleague stops making so much noise down there.
Oh, she's not.
I'll make a motion to appoint Fran McMillan to the Economic Development Commission for a term of three years or until a successor is named and completion of the Conflict of Interest Law Online Training Program is completed within thirty days.
Second?
Well, second.
Second by Ms. Canfield, all in favor?
Aye.
Four zero, motion carries. All right, that's all the other committees.
Thanks, Lorraine.
Yes, thank you, thank you. Yes.
Thanks, Deb.
All right. All right, other business, liaison reports. I think it's been a kind of a quiet week in town, other than Henri.
For tell.
Who did not make an appearance.
If you have not seen the lovely water, uh, reports.
The information.
The video.
Informational video, it's excellent, it's online. Everyone can check it out, see it, a lot of...
So was it?
At one point, there were 90 people.
Excellent.
Yeah.
There was an average of around 70.
I thought it was very well done. I actually forwarded to a bunch of people, so.
A little bit.
Yeah, yeah, it was good. Good participation.
The only meetings that we've had, DEI met, so they're moving forward and continuing to be very structured, and will be coming forward, I think, just to give us an update pretty soon, shortly, which will be good. And the Affordable Housing Trust, we met the other night to talk about a developer proposal. But the planning board needs to evaluate it first, but they came before us to potentially build an affordable unit on the Stockbridge Road property that we own. But we can't obviously vote on it until the planning board works through their issues. But certainly very amenable to that, if that could happen, but we're not there yet. And I have not had a chance to call Hingham yet about a veteran partnership, so still working on that. Sideline for a couple of weeks.
So is the Affordable Housing Trust, it's not them, it's the Housing Authority that's in charge of the money that we allocated from CPC for, for rental assistance slash financial assistance?
No, that's the Affordable Housing Trust, which we have, that's not the...
It's the Housing Authority.
No.
It, it is you, it is the Housing Trust, okay.
Correct, but we have put out to bid, like, a facilitator, if you will. We've had a difficult time finding a facilitator to do the lottery and do the research and manage it. So we just put out another bid, and we're waiting to get responses back for someone who can manage that. And other, other initiatives that the Affordable Housing Trust is looking at is a repair, a grant repair fund for folks to do repairs on their homes, not, you know, just full mental work or mortgage, if you will. So that's sort of the next thing that we're looking at. And that's all I've got. Ms. Canfield?
Just quickly, I was, I was able to attend the Citute Chamber of Commerce meeting as our liaison this week, or last week, I guess it was. And they reported, what we've all observed, was that Heritage Days was very well received, that the rest, that the businesses liked that it was behind. They didn't think they got as much foot traffic as normal, but they liked having the street open. So generally speaking, they were all very pleased. And they, they've reconstituted sort of their leadership and are launching our new Instagram and social media presence, so I think they're, um, accustomed of doing some really good things. And the new beach commission members will be convening, I think, we're looking at dates, but then early in September, we'll have sort of the launch meeting for that as well. So that's all I have.
All right. Well, the only thing I have is kind of a good one, and that is the school committee and the select board will be having joint interviews to interview the potential candidates, applicants, I should say, to be on the school committee for the remainder of the term that was vacated. And that will, that will come up in the spring, probably May timeframe. But we are scheduling interviews with four people on September 8th and four people on September 9th. We did get eight applicants, and I thank Lorraine for coordinating all of it. And then we will be voting, I don't have it here, on September 15th. We'll have a joint meeting of the select board and the school committee to be able to vote. Jim and I talked about this today. Apparently, it would be possible for, I know that Mara has plans, Karen has tentative plans, they won't be available for the interviews. But if you were to review the, the interviews that are done, we're going to be taping them, you could potentially vote.
I'll, so I'll be here for the interviews.
But you won't be here?
I could, I could probably remotely dial in for the vote. I can do that.
All right.
Although what's time will it be?
And if you can't be here for the interviews, so, so it will be very likely the five select board members and the, the four remaining school committee members, so. And it will be broadcast live, the interviews via Facebook. I don't understand the technology myself, but it will also be available the next day on a Citute Community YouTube. So people will be able to, you know, see all the candidates, and we're very happy that eight people stepped up. It's not an easy committee to be on these days, it's...
But the meeting is open to public at the new senior.
Yes, it's at the new senior center, so if people want to come and view in public, they can.
What's the capacity there?
Oh, it's...
We might want, might want to publish that.
It's big.
At the senior center?
Yeah, the big room.
In front of the...
There's a giant room in the first floor.
Two rooms.
Wow, fit 200 people in there?
Oh, yeah.
Yep.
I mean, I don't have to decide the capacity.
It's, it's...
Okay, I'm just throwing it out there, because...
No, it's big.
It's gonna get a big attendance.
Well, but if people can watch it on Facebook Live, I have a feeling that a lot of people will just say, you know, why am I going to go out?
I mean, I don't think it's going to be open to public to ask the candidates questions.
No, it's strictly, if people want to come and observe, they can, but we're, the, the boards are going to ask the questions, so.
And Madam Chair, have you had an opportunity to work with Chairman Long to review the format?
Yes. And we're still working.
Okay. So we'll get that beforehand.
Yes, we have letters that, and, um, the applications from all of them, all the candidates, and we will be sending out that information soon. We will be publishing the agendas with the candidates' names on them.
This Friday.
This Friday. And we're, Mr. Long and I are still discussing how the questions are going to be asked and how that's going to all work. And we still, obviously, have to figure out, once we come to vote, how that's going to take place, but we're working on it.
Okay.
And if you have any ideas, please feel free. We're open to suggestions. So that's my liaison report. Anything else? So approval of meeting minutes. Do I hear a motion? Does anyone have the motion?
Do we have correspondence for us?
Oh, I'm sorry, correspondence.
There's not much, so I'll be...
The Plymouth County CARES number is still there.
Look at that.
Plymouth County CARES.
I think I've seen it in a while.
Uh, and I can't believe I'm saying this, Willie Super Brew.
Oh, yes.
Super Beach Cleanup, September 18th. So it's a big, it's a statewide effort. There's, you can sign up for your local mine, it's going to be on there. Egypt is on there, I think Peggity is as well. That on the 18th, you go to those beaches and help clean up, and Willie's Super Brew, which is a hard... So if you're over 21, they're giving out free merch and...
Cool down is probably...
Few points, so you gotta be over 21, I would assume.
What a great idea.
I will assume, I will certainly report that to the Beach Commission when they reconvene.
Yes, that's a great idea.
Yeah, before you get a koozie or something, but, um, and there's also, I don't, there's also a gentleman, I think everyone's emailed if you saw it from, he was out in Hummerock, asking us to just consider more shore for protection because of, you know, Henri and other, he's...
I think we need to determine whether that's a private or public.
But I'm just...
Area.
Make sure people are aware.
I'm thinking we need a future state-of-the-sea walls.
I think we do too.
Report funding, what's doable, what's not doable. Hummerock, in particular, being somewhat recalcitrant about letting us do work down there. Just my observation.
No, I think it'd be great to have our new coastal resource officer come in and give us an update. We haven't had an opportunity to...
Meet her.
Meet her.
Karen's matter.
James?
I did, in the emergency meeting.
Yeah, we can bring her in.
Any more correspondence?
That's it, no, I'm sorry, that's...
Well, I just want to, you know, shout out to Nancy, $2.8 million from Plymouth CARES, so...
That's about as much as we can get, right?
One of the largest.
As far as we can get over the car allocation, they said they might make additional allocations, and Jim has submitted the additional amount that we would like. And we're just waiting to hear if he's giving...
And this is just CARES? Now we've got...
So just CARES, not Opera, yeah.
And then there's the potential infrastructure bill? And then, okay.
Federal infrastructure bill and potentially a state infrastructure bill, so. Trying to get our hands on everything.
Good.
We can cover it all in class, but we would refuse all the extra.
Good job, thank you.
Thank you. Minutes, acceptance, motion, anybody got it? Move to accept the minutes of?